Meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. I'm going to read a script for remote select board meetings. This is the select board chair, Tom Lucusa. I'll be confirming that all members and persons participated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in affirmative. Mark Strange?
Here.
Yes, Stephen Moran. Okay. Richard Foster?
Here.
Mark Gold?
Here.
Stephen Moran's trying to get through? Okay. Staff, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Paul Pesterzic?
Here.
Tempe House?
Here.
Right, and then, anticipated speakers. Cole Vest?
Here.
They don't have, they don't, our superintendent of schools, Marty O'Shea, are you here?
I'm here and I can hear you very well.
Okay, and then you, there's two other folks, someone else has joined you, the co-chair of the school committee, is it Brian?
Correct, Brian. Yep.
Okay, you're here, thank you. And then, we have someone from the water committee, or from the water superintendent. They're going to check in with us later. And then, alright, so that's good. So, this, this open meeting on the Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely.
They're so muted.
What's the...
What's that?
Ah, here we go. Something changed, okay. So, this is the meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. Yeah, folks, they want to mute themselves if they're not in a speaking room. So, we get through this, we have a lot of business to conduct. We couldn't even fit everything off the agenda that we had discussed last week. So, I'll ask people to, you know, be brief in their comments and...
What's the next?
Through this. And it'll be easier if we don't have two speakers going at once. Okay, and there is public comment, yes. Okay, the open meeting of the select board is conducted remotely. We've recovered the governor's order, order, of March 12, 2020, due to the occurrence of an emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings as such. The governor's order suspends the requirements of the open meeting law. You have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required along. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Long Meadow Select Board is convening by telephone conference, video conference, or Zoom, as posted in the town's website, identifying how public may join. For resident comments, after announcement of COVID-19 update, the general announcement, our forward public comments is follows. I will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once I have a list of all public commentators, I'll call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and may, and take care not to share your screen or your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the meeting materials for this meeting are available on the agenda, posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along with the posted agenda unless I otherwise, unless I know it otherwise, which I will be doing often tonight. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude the remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name, despite comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage closely with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, no taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Right, so, I will, we will start with an update on the COVID-19 status in town. I will turn over to town manager Lynn Simmons.
Thank you. I will be providing tonight's COVID-19 update. Chief Dearborn is out of the area right now. As of earlier this afternoon, there were two active COVID-19 cases in the community. We have been receiving more complaints about groups playing basketball, not wearing a mask, or social distancing. Board of Health is meeting tonight in an emergency meeting to discuss a possible order to close the courts. The increased signage and education that we've done at the courts has not changed behavior. So unfortunately, we are looking at pursuing additional means to first responsible behavior. The fire departments continue to be instrumental in providing support to all town departments, particularly in ordering and distributing PPE. All PPE orders are in and we have stabilized our supplied PPE. Our department now has face masks with removable cartridges, replaceable cartridges, that provide a better level of protection. It's an item that we are not able to access during the height of the outbreak, so we'll try to have those now. The COVID-19 compliance officer that we've hired is continuing to assist departments with reopening guidance and appliance efforts. The satellite office space in the community house is continuing to run. The adult center will remain closed until the new facility is ready. Greenwood daycare will not reopen this fall. And right after my update, you will be getting an update from the school superintendent and the school committee vice chair to provide an update on the Long Meadow Pope School reopening plans.
Okay, thank you Lynn. Does anyone on the select board have any questions regarding the COVID-19 report? Quickly go through.
Tom?
Yes?
Just a quick, although Greenwood Center is closed, it will not be closed for the election, correct?
Correct, thanks for bringing that up. Correct, at your last meeting or the meeting before, we, there was a vote to move the election to Greenwood Center so that we can space out the precincts better. We will be utilizing the entire building till November 3rd. Early voting is also going to be at Greenwood Center, but just on the adult center side. In our announcements, a little bit later on, I will be just giving people the specific dates on early voting. They're also available on the website, longmeadow.org. And the town clerk and many other staff people in town offices have been busy getting ballots ready to mail out. We've got 3,400 requests for early voting ballots, and those are all going out in the mail. If you did request one, and multiple members of your family have requested one, depending on the timing of your request being fulfilled, there may be a bit of a couple day delay between someone in your household receiving one and you receiving one, so just hang tight for a day or two. But if you don't get one, and you do request one, you can certainly...
Okay, great. Mark Strange, any comments?
No, I don't.
Okay. I'm here for Steve Moran's, Richard Foster?
No comments.
Okay, Mark Gold?
No questions.
Okay, great. So now, we'll move on to our, well, we do have one announcement. Lynn, you want to make that quickly?
Sure, just give me one second, let me grab my paper.
Okay, sorry, I got you.
Okay, thank you. So, it, just jumping off of what I was just saying, the vote by mail update. Ballots for the September 1st state primary have started to mail out. Currently, you know, it's just going to take a little bit of time for us to process all the requests, but if you or multiple members of your family request ballots, just give us a little bit of time if there's a delay for everyone in your household receiving one. We expect everything that we have on file to be mailed out in the next few days. And just again, if you have a question, you can call the town clerk's office, but it will take a day or two to, once we receive your request, to get a ballot in the mail to you. The deadline to apply for a vote by mail ballot is August 27th. That is for the September 1st. The deadline to return that ballot is 8 o'clock on Election Day, Tuesday, September 1st. Ballots can be returned by mail in the postage pillow provided in the packet that's mailed out to you, or you can drop it off at Town Hall. There is a secure locked drop box right to the right hand side of the front door. The voting location for the September 1st election and November 3rd election will be at Greenwood. A wide call to notify all residents will be done tomorrow night, and we will also follow up with a reminder about the voting location change the week before the election. And early vote, early voting is going to take place August 22nd through August 28th. This will be in the over 60 room at the adult center. Saturday, the 22nd will be 8 to noon. Sunday, the 23rd will be 9 to 1. Monday and Tuesday, so the 24th and 25th will be 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. Wednesday, the 26th will be 8 a.m. to 7 p.m. Thursday, the 27th will be 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. And Friday, the 28th will be 8 a.m. to 1 p.m. And for anybody trying to write that down, all of that is available on the town website and on our social media page.
Okay, thank you Lynn. Is there any other announcements for, how to do it down? Okay, so, it's great to have our superintendent of schools, Marty O'Shea here, and the vice chair of the school committee, Byron, to talk a little bit about the school reopening plan, and I don't know who wants to start first, but I will.
You're going to do public participation?
I will do that later. We'll do public participation right after this announcement, court announcement regarding the school reopening. So, you can just hold on a little bit. So, Superintendent O'Shea?
Good evening, select board. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight and give you a broad overview of our reopening plans, and happy to answer any questions you might have. So, the vice chair, Bronwyn Monahan, and I are here. We can tell you a little bit about the current proposal and some of the contingencies that are built into that. As last, it was August 6th, the school committee took a vote. Reaping, and that was vote to bring us in line with the Department of Education requirement that a plan be submitted to the state by August 14th. The original date was the 10th, they moved that to the 14th. So, I think the best way to describe our reopening is that it will be a phased in hybrid model. And I think these are phrases that everyone seems to be comfortable with, but when we talk about a hybrid model, we're talking about an arrangement where half of our students would be with us for in-person learning on any given day. So, the general arrangement is that students would be divided into two cohorts. Cohort A and cohort B, 50% in each roughly. Students in cohort A would attend on Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday would be set aside as a, as a cleaning day. And then cohort B would join us on Thursday and Friday. There's a couple of qualifiers to that general hybrid model. The plan is to offer a full day experience to students, pre-K students, and a limited number of students with very intensive special education needs. So, other than that, small group of students in pre-K and students with the intensive special education needs, students would attend school on a hybrid basis, as part of one of the two cohorts. Now, the, I would also note that the school committee to allow for sufficient time to make sure that we are ready for students to return for some amount of in-person learning, the school committee decided to sort of delay the first day of that hybrid learning model. So, at the elementary level, the students will be involved in a remote learning plan from September 14th to September 21st. And on the 21st, they'll start their first day in the hybrid model. At the middle school level, students would be learning fully remote from the 14th to the 25th of September. And then on Tuesday, September 29th, students at the middle level would start with the first day of hybrid instruction. And then, at the high school level, students would be fully remote from September 14th to October 2nd. And then the first day of any in-person learning for high school students would be Monday, October 5th. That's a sort of a broad summary, I guess, of the reopening plan that was voted by the school committee on August 6th. I will note, it's very important to note that the school committee has made it clear in all of their meetings that that decision is subject to ongoing and continual review, and that the sitter moving to a more restrictive model if a number of contingencies aren't met. And those include the level, the health metrics that we continue to watch. We want to make sure that we have adequate and appropriate staffing. We want to be sure that we can maintain the six foot social, social and physical distancing plan. We want to make sure that we have a regular adequate supply of PPE, and that we're, you know, attentive to all the facility issues that allow for a safe reopening. So, there's a number of factors that, that sort of have to continually be met if we are to open for any amount of in-person learning. And I know the school committee, beginning tomorrow night, has asked us to sort of continually and regularly brief them and update them on our readiness to open under the voted hybrid model. And I think, you know, again, speaking just for myself, I would be, I would be, I would not hesitate to move to a more restricted model if we could not maintain the health and safety expectations that we've set up for ourselves and that follow the guidance that we've received. So, I want to note, I want to note that I appreciate the participation of town officials. Nick Durganis has done a great job assessing and improving ventilation systems. Chief Dearborn has been, it's like I might have a, might be buffering. Chief Dearborn has been fantastic in terms of helping us with the PPE and ordering the supplies that we need. And then he and Beverly Hershaw have been great sources of information in terms of helping us understand the, the local health metrics. So, this doesn't happen without the involvement and support of, I think it's important to recognize and thank them for their participation in this as well. So, happy to go into further detail or answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, Superintendent, the only thing, you were muffled a little bit when you referred about the German, or the gentleman who helped with the ventilation, maybe you could just repeat his name?
Sure, Nick, Nick Durganis, your facilities director for the schools. He did an outstanding job of assessing and upgrading, if necessary, the ventilation systems. And so, he's been a regular part of our reopening advisory task force, as have Fisher Department. I think it was a, a great idea, a great move on the part of the select board to initiate appointing Andy Fraser as your COVID compliance officer. He's been a, a great resource to our administrative team as well. So, thanks for, for the, you know, the level of participation and support that we've received from the town on, on our reopening.
Right, and as things proceed, if there's ever a point where you want to have us make an announcement at these meetings regarding changes, you know, please get them to Lynn. Monahan, did you have anything to add?
Thank you, Tom. No, other than the fact that we appreciate all the hard work of the superintendent and assistant superintendents and all the principals. They've been working diligently all summer to make this work, try and get the students back to school safely. And we really appreciate that. The teachers have been working hard on professional development for the hybrid and remote learning, which is going to be very significant for the students, and people are really excited about that. And I would echo what Dr. O'Shea said, that we're monitoring things. You know, it's still a couple weeks before the opening of school. So, we'll continue to be diligent and get as much information as possible from Chief Dearborn and the Board of Health. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And so, I'll just go through the board to see if there's any questions. Steve Moran's, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do, with a really great job, tough job to be doing now. My question is in terms of what you guys are doing, how much is that is under local control? And how much is that mandated by the governor?
That's a great question, Steve, and I, and I'll try to answer without editorializing too much. But the, for most of May and June, we had heard that a great percentage of the direction that we would get on this would come from the state, and that they were going to be very prescriptive. Repeatedly, we heard the phrase that 85% of the reopening would be sort of directed by the state. That turned out not to be the case. And it's put school communities in a, in a very difficult position to try to come up with their own sort of localized approach to this. So, the Department of Education has been helpful in providing guidance, particularly as it relates to COVID-19 response protocols and facility safety. So, there's been a lot of great guidance documents, but the decisions themselves have largely rested with local communities. And what was most problematic, in my view, is that the, the red, yellow, green health metric that you saw come out recently, came out after many school committees had made their, their decision. So, I think, you know, if I could rewind the clock, I'd have that health metric issued at a much earlier date so that committees could make even more informed decisions. But having said all that, you know, we're, the committee is not locked in. They're, they're prepared to pivot if local...
Okay.
I hope that answers your question, Steve.
Okay. Mark Strange?
Yeah, you know, just kudos to Marty and Bronwyn and all your colleagues, you're doing such a great job. I can't imagine the discussions you guys had. I saw the one long meeting where you guys voted. And just, it's really, thank you so much from, as a resident, for all your hard work. I know this was not an easy task. I do have, I did one question. So, I didn't see any discussion about kind of climate control and temperatures. So, in the beginning of the school year, temperatures obviously tend to be warmer. But I don't think that HVAC systems will be, will be running, will be circulating air. So, my questions are, how do we, if we are going to, how do we cool kids or cool rooms in the beginning of the year? And how do we warm them up in the middle of the year?
So, I think my understanding, Mark, and certainly these are questions that I always like to defer to folks with the, really the technical backgrounds on these things. But my understanding is that, that ventilation is, is perhaps more important than the temperature. And so, many of our schools are not fully air conditioned, Glenbrook being one example, right? And, and so, you know, ventilation and air exchange become very critical. And opening windows is a, is a really simple but very significant mitigation strategy. We've also, we also hope to purchase some tents for outdoor meetings, outdoor instruction. So, whenever we can, getting kids outside will be a part of it. Of course, that's not a strategy we can rely on here in New England. But, you know, as weather permits, we'd love to take advantage of opportunities for kids to be outside. So, what Nick has done, what Nick Durganis and his team have done is basically, you know, maximize the fresh air exchange. I think when we get into the winter months, I think Nick will want to reassess that because, you know, bringing in, opening the dampers and bringing in fresh air, you know, fully, works in the early fall, but becomes, you know, creates some challenges in the winter. So, I know that Nick will want to reassess that strategy as we get to the colder, the colder months.
Okay. Richard Foster, any questions?
No, I don't have any, Tom, thank you.
Okay, and Mark Gold, any questions?
I have a couple. Dr. O'Shea, you said that you had cohorts A and B. A would be in-person, Monday, Tuesday, B in-person, Thursday, Friday. What are A doing Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday? What are B doing Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday?
So, the, the expectation is that the students who are learning remotely can access the instruction that's happening for some students in person. So, the, the B cohort, if it's out of school on Monday and Tuesday, the expectation would be that they have, that they can access that through the use of instructional technology. One of the advantages that we have here in Long Meadow is that our teachers are equipped with, with laptops. And we will get each teacher who needs it a tablet device. And between the two of those, they'll be able to make that connection to the kids who are learning remotely. There's also staff that can engage the remote learners. So, the hope is that even for the kids who are in that remote cohort, that they can access instruction and sometimes even on a synchronous real-time basis.
Thanks. Another couple of questions is, you said that, you know, you're going to monitor things and potentially, you know, become more restrictive if necessary. Is there any possibility of becoming less restrictive? And I guess our B of that question is, how long? And I guess our B of that question is, how long is this plan in place for? Is, what's your review timetable? You know, can parents be assured that it's going to be this way through X date? Or, you know, is this subject to ongoing changes?
I, you know, I, I've seen districts sort of pick dates, at which point they'll change to a different model or they'll reassess. That all seems a little bit arbitrary. I, I think the best approach is just to review it on an ongoing basis. And Mark, you can make a good point that I think if the, if the conditions created opportunities to return more students to some learning, I think we'd want to take advantage of that. I think we all know though that, that that's, that's large, that's dependent on the virus, and it's dependent on local health metrics, and it's dependent on what our Board of Health tells us. It's dependent on what guidance we get from the state. But if we have that chance, we would identify priority grades or priority groups of students for additional in-person. It could be that the, that the phase in goes in the other direction on the backside of this pandemic. So as, as conditions improve, we would identify grades or groups of students to return to in-person learning. When that will be, you know, that's, that's the crystal ball that we all wish we had.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. And Superintendent, I did get a question. They said, parents who opt out, we use the opt-out potion, option for families, can they continue past the October 5th phase in as an opt-out?
Yeah, so, so we'll, we'll want to be respectful of parents that, for whatever reason, decide that their, their children won't participate in any in-person learning. We're referring to that group as Cohort C. And so that group will have, will ask families to make a commitment sometime soon on their intentions there, but we also know that families can, can, for very good reasons, change what they think is best for their children. And so we would want to be respectful of that. So if a family starts out participating in the hybrid model and decides that it doesn't make sense for their children, then they can go into that fully remote cohort. Alternatively, if a family starts in the fully remote cohort, they would have the option of joining us in the hybrid model. Whether, whatever cohort you're in, you're, you're part of the Long Meadow community, you, you have access to Long Meadow instruction. I think slide going from a fully remote back into the hybrid model, that, that, that probably might take a little bit more time and require more adjustment, but to go from the hybrid model into the fully remote Cohort C approach, that, that can happen fairly seamlessly.
Okay. And again, you know, in, in the, in the talking I've done to students, usually this time of year, the last thing they're thinking, I was like, oh, I gotta go back to school, you know? But this year, everyone's very excited, you know, about seeing their friends and they want to go back. And I know it wasn't an easy decision for you, for the school board to come to this, this phase-in program, but, you know, I know it's the outcome of a lot of work and a lot of thinking and, and, you know, we appreciate the work you've done, and I really appreciate the two of you coming here to share this, you know, with the select board, so that we're all on the same page. And, you know, if you want to come back again, let us know, otherwise I guess we won't see you till budget time.
Yeah, thank, thanks, Tom. I, I appreciate the chance, any, any chance to explain this to communities is welcome and, and appreciate everybody's efforts, including the teachers. Their, teachers are really anxious to come back as well. Understandably, they have some concerns that we need to address, but everybody across the board, teachers, students, administrators, we're, we would love to get back, but obviously health and safety is the first priority.
Okay. Well, great. Thank you very much. We'll move on the agenda to resident comments, and as we've said before, it's a three-minute window. And so Lynn, do we have some folks who plan to say something? I know I heard from, from Liz Bone wanted to speak.
We do. We have Martine, we have Liz Bone, I think we, it looks like we have Pete Landon.
Okay.
That's, looks like all I have at the moment. You can either raise your hand or send me something in the chat if you want to speak.
Okay, great. Well, why don't we start with Liz Bone? If you could, we can unmute you and get you started. Thank you. And just your name and your address, please. Are you there, Liz?
Hi, sorry, I didn't realize I had to unmute myself.
Okay.
Liz Bone, 34 Elizabeth Circle. I just wanted to comment, I know that you guys are going to talk about the Charter Review Commission a little bit later on, and I just wanted to give my two cents, I guess, emails. And I noticed that we started our review commission, started the meetings back in 2017, and we worked for about over a year on going through recommendations and going through the charter line by line, just making a little, you know, clerical changes, and also really just looking at what the committees mean to Long Meadow at this point in time and how they differ from what they used to mean 10 years ago. And I just wanted to say that we came to, all of us came to the same conclusion, that we believe that our form of government is, does work for Long Meadow, and it gives our residents a say in, you know, things that mean a lot to our residents. For example, we have our, you know, our petition, kids and parents get behind, they think they're very meaningful to the town, and I'm not sure how that would work in a different form of government, especially if it was not led by individuals who have the same goals for the whole community. And I just wanted to also talk about, just for a second, that when we had our committee, we reached out to all the committees in town to, to give their, any information or changes that they wanted to see. We also did also invite the select board to come and give us anything that they wanted to see, but at, at that point, the select board, I think, and our committee, they decided that they would review it after we gave our recommendations. So they felt at that point, they did not need to come and speak to our committee, and I have emails about that, and, and I just wanted to set the record straight on that. So I guess that's it.
All right. Well, Liz, thank you very much. Okay.
You're welcome.
And our next speaker would be Martin, or Martine? Your name and your address, just unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. My name is Martine Inandis. I live on 299 Maple Road. I am a resident and parent of kids here in Long Meadow. I'm also here just to, if I'm allowed, I just wanted to introduce a group of residents and parents called LARC. They're called the Long Meadow Anti-Racist Coalition. And our mission is basically to dismantle the structures that have caused and perpetuated systemic racism, racism in our town, and to replace them with systems that encourage and sustain demonstrable diversity and equity. ours is a multi-pronged approach that draws on the diverse interests, experience, and expertise of our members, to include activism, legislative engagement, and educational initiatives and reform. So this group is made up of about 330 residents. I just wanted to introduce the group to the select board and any other community members that might be on the call. And I also wanted to express my interest in being part of the Anti-Racism Coalition Task Force. I understand that there will be a formal process where people who are interested in participating will be writing letters, I guess, to the select board or, or the town manager, but I just wanted to express my interest. I have another colleague here from the group that hopefully will also put her name forward. She has a lot of policy experience, so I think as one of the few Latino families here in Long Meadow, I would be very interested in participating in the coalition. So that, that's all. I wanted to thank the select board for having the courage to pass the motion, the resolution that created a space for this task force. There's a lot of work to be done, but I'm very appreciative that this happened, so thank you very much.
Great. And Martine, we usually don't talk too much, but is there any way for people who wanted to join LARC to make a connection? What's the best way to find you? Do you have a webpage or?
There is a Facebook page, and if, I don't know if I'm allowed, but I can always put my email in the chat. I don't know if that's very permitted, but.
Yeah, I think that, that'd be all right, yeah. On the chat would be fine. And then, so they look at Facebook under LARC?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much, Tom.
All right. And next we have Pete Landon. Just your name and your address, start with that.
Pete Landon, Flat Meadow Brook Road, Long Meadow. I was calling on the same subject that Liz Bone was regarding the charter, and the charter review. I was on the commission in 2002, and the original charter commission, and then I was on the charter review recently. And I, and I did a minority part on the last one, which was to take a look at the form of government, because under a charter review, you don't have the power to do a look at the, you wordsmith the existing charter or make some workflow improvements. The, I think that I see it's on your agenda to look at the various forms of government. I think if we do, we have a great potential to improve the efficiency of our decision-making and to improve form decision-making. I don't see that happening at the, in, in one body, which is the conversations at, at town meetings, so that's my focus. But I would like to thank you for the opportunity. Have a good day.
Okay, thank you very much. And Lynn, has anyone else gotten in touch with you about speaking?
That was all I had so far. I did just want to add, if you're watching us on YouTube and you want the email address or how to get in touch with Martine for information on LARC, you can feel free to call me at the town manager's office or email me, because you won't be able to see the chat through YouTube or if you're streaming it on LCTV right now. Just wanted to make sure people that were watching in other methods have that information as well.
Okay, thank you. And we just, I know that Mr. Berman is here. He's interviewing for the Conservation Commission, and I think I'd like to try to do that right now. Mr. Berman, could you just unmute yourself and tell us your interest in serving the town?
Sure. My name is Roman Berman. I'm at 69 Canterbury Lane. I have plenty of experience with efficiency. As a matter of fact, that's, that's what I do currently. I work with the utilities to generally get businesses, commercial, industrial, and municipalities to be more efficient, and I'd love to use my knowledge base to help out Long Meadow. I've moved here about a year ago. I love the town, and I definitely want to become a little bit more involved, especially with everything going on in the world now.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the select board that have any questions for Roman?
Yeah, Tom, I do.
Yes, Mark Gold.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Berman, for applying. I was wondering if you had a chance to either attend any Conservation Commission hearings, look at the notes, talk to, I guess, Alex, who's been our chair of the Conservation Committee, or anything that you've done to maybe familiarize yourself with what they do?
Not as of yet. I actually came across this. Wow, just, yes, time right now seems a little bit difficult to figure out, every day being the same. But I came across this about a week ago or so, and then I, you know, I reached out, I guess, you know, applied, if you will, and I just found out about this meeting a couple of days ago as well, and so I haven't had the opportunity to look in, anymore into it.
I just suggest, Alex is a great resource. He's, I, I think his email's on our website. If you need it, just let me know. We've got his, Debbie House at our office has his information, too. Maybe worth reaching out to him.
Fantastic, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the select board? So Roman, thank you for coming in.
My pleasure.
You know, we appreciate it. We will get back to you. We will process this and then we'll take a vote at probably our next select board meeting. So, and then we'll get back to you.
Great.
Do you know what the term of service is on your, for this board?
I, no, I do not.
Okay. Well, I'm sure Deb House will let us know on the, off the chat. Okay. Thank you very much, and good evening. Okay, so we're going to, we have a couple of folks, some lawyers and so forth, online, so we're going to move over and come back to select board comments and the town manager's report. And I'd like to move to the Coalvest Long Meadow LLCC agreement for roadway improvements and maintenance. We've received a, a document on that to include, included diagrams, and then in the last, we also received from Lynn Simmons for tonight's agenda, an item through Gmail that talks about the joint select board planning board meeting that talks about the same project, and this was dated August, oh, wait, it was May 15th, 2017. So this is a project that's been around a little bit, and so I guess we'll start with Coalvest. I don't know who wants to, who, just introduce yourself.
I'll start the conversation. Jeffrey Roberts, I'm a Long Meadow resident and attorney for Coalvest. And I believe what you have from Lynn is a draft of an agreement, well, entitled agreement for roadway improvements and maintenance. And this is a draft that has been developed initially by Coalvest, by Coalvest and me and Jesse Belcher-Timmy has looked at it, Lynn has looked at it. Actually, this started before Lynn was the town manager, but it got more recent attention since she's been here. Also with me is Frank Colacino, who is the principal of Coalvest, who's available to answer questions, and one of his engineers, Peter LePointe, who I believe will be showing up here. And he is, he's the specialist on all the diagrams and can answer any direct questions about the project, or specific questions, I should say. But as an overview, Coalvest owns the shopping center at the corner of Bliss Road and Long Meadow Street, Route 5. And on the Bliss Road side, the, it has Fred Astaire Dance as a tenant and maybe somewhere else. On the Long Meadow Street side, it was occupied by Hampton Savings Bank primarily and by an optical shop, optometrist. So there was a, there was a financial services through the bank, and there was professional services through the optometrist. The bank has since left. Coalvest has, has an interest in totally upgrading the building, which is something, you know, in my opinion, Coalvest does very well on all its properties. And, and the, the reason for this agreement is that the, what you think of as the parking area on, in front of that building, as the parking space for the building is actually a public way. It's a street for the town. So what Coalvest would like to do is they'd like to redesign the layout of that, of what is the street, together with what is its property, to improve the parking and, and also improve the street itself, because the town has not really, they've really deferred the maintenance to Coalvest. So the lawn, the trees, the sidewalk, et cetera, has all been maintained by Coalvest for quite a while. What Coalvest would like to do at its expense is to redo the street, redo the sidewalk, create an opportunity for parking, which is more suitable for create an opportunity for parking, which is more suitable for a building like that with a few tenants in it. The tenants are the same basic category of tenants that has been there before. Financial services, professional office of one kind or another. It's not a property that will, I'm sure the planning board will, will make sure of this, will not have a Starbucks there, will not have a McDonald's or a pizza place. It's strictly an office facility as it is on the Bliss Road side. The, a question that's been bounced back and forth between myself and town council and Ms. Simmons is what do you, what are the arrangements for parking? In other words, we, we're, we feel, I feel, I think, I don't think anyone disagrees on the town side. And since the town is not spending any money, all the town is doing is making sure that the project is done the way it's designed to be done. Well, okay. I don't know who that was. My friend Walter. But the, the, the project will be done under the cooperation with the town. So what is designed is in this, is attached to this agreement. And Coalvest will pay all the expense. So this is, is no expense to the town. We think it's good for the property. We think it's good for the town. And that's why it's been proposed. The, I've been told by my clients that, that starting some time ago, the plans that are attached to this agreement were circulated throughout the town engineering departments and have been vetted by them. But you will, of course, learn that yourselves. But I think that's already been done. So what we're looking for really on the Coalvest side is the select board's approval to enter into this agreement. And there are only two things that are on the draft that Lynn gave you. It's attached to this agenda. And I invite her to correct me if I'm wrong. One of the things is that, is a blank here as to when Coalvest will begin the project. In other words, it's a timeframe here that Frank and Peter, I think, can lay out for you. The other thing is the Lynn added to the draft that I had prepared that Coalvest will put up some collateral, some indemnification for the cost of the project. And I think the objective is that the town does not want to have this project get underway and abandoned and then who has to pay for it, have it be finished? So she put a clause in here, it's paragraph eight. It deals with a performance bond or a cash bond. And I emailed her and asked her if we could include in there an option for Coalvest to put up a letter of credit. Which she and I discussed in an email. She emailed back to me that she thought that would be fine, but it's not in this draft. And I would just ask that as far as Coalvest is concerned, the only part of this draft that you have that we would like to just edit is add in there paragraph eight that a letter of credit is also a suitable form of collateral. And that's, that's our story.
Okay. Well, great. Thank you. Now, we do have a town's attorney, Jesse Belcher-Timmy. And Jesse, do you have any first, you know, review of the ones presented?
I think Jeff outlined the history and the current status pretty well. I, I looked at this, I think my first conversations about this might go back to even Stephen Crane's tenure here. So it's, it's been batted about in a lot of different forms. And there's been a lot of people, you know, town department heads and employees and officials that have looked at it as well and given their sort of area of expertise. So, I mean, I think mostly what's in here now is really a matter of sort of just a policy decision by the select board. I think that for the most part, what's in here is at least acceptable to people who would have to deal with different aspects of it. But I'm happy to answer any specific questions if you have any of me.
Okay. So maybe we'll go through the select board. Mark Gold, any questions that you have?
I have a lot of questions. Is this for our attorney or is this for Attorney Roberts or is this just in general?
I, I, I think you could ask either one of the attorneys questions.
You know, I was on the select board back in May of twenty seventeen when this first came up. I, I still have the diagrams, which are a whole lot easier to read than, than the ones we've got. So I guess my questions, and this may be for their, their engineer is, you know, is this design substantially or in what ways may it be different from what we've got in two thousand and seventeen? I couldn't notice anything, but you know, I just couldn't, literally couldn't expand those online documents large enough to see them. So my first question is, is this different from that, that design?
Oh, no. The design is exactly the same. This is Peter LePointe from Coalvest.
Thank you. I appreciate, appreciate that. So, you know, at, at the time, and I, I actually asked Debbie House to send the select board members the minutes from that meeting back in twenty seventeen because we have two new select board members. One of the questions we had was the movement of the, is the bus stop going to be moved? Is the sidewalk going to be moved? You know, that kind of stuff. And it appears that since none of that's changed, it looks like the bus stop is, is going to stay. But I, I can't see that on the, on the, on the design. But the biggest thing is we're losing, losing the green space of the wall. Is that true? Mr. LePointe, that, that we're losing all that green space?
You're losing the green space. You're not losing the wall. The wall gets reconstructed and the bus stop remains.
Okay. So we're, so we're losing that green space, which means we're losing a couple of, of shade trees. And we, back in, in two thousand and seventeen, Coalvest offered to replace shade trees elsewhere in town as a replacement for the shade trees they're taking down. I didn't see.
You're losing one shade tree, which is immediately in front of our building. And what we had offered to do was replace a tree that was terribly derelict immediately across the street. That tree has since fallen down and, and this, they prepared the space for a new tree.
Right. But you know, I, I actually had, took some videos at the time, Peter, and I think there's a second tree. It's closer to the gas station, but it looks like it's going to be taken out too. There were, you know, from my perspective, there were two pick, two trees. But the bigger question is where's the planning board on this? Has this gone before the planning board? Because back in two thousand and seventeen, we said it needs to go before the planning board at some point to get their assessment. And, you know, at the time, it was actually a joint meeting of the planning board and the select board. And the planning board folks had far more questions than, than we had. So I guess, Mr. Roberts, has this gone before the Long Meadow Planning Board yet?
No, that's, you're getting into, now you're testing my memory. I believe we, we went before the planning board on some issues regarding the building. I think it was primarily signage. And the planning board wanted the, they want, they required the Hampton Savings Bank sign to be removed, other signs to be removed, and that's all been done. I see, I think Walter may be on this call. I'm not sure. I see his name here. I believe when we discussed the, the future of the building, between the planning board and the building commissioner was there, this is not a change in use and there are no external renovations, which, which those, those issues are the jurisdiction of the planning boards. So if you don't have a change in use, you don't have any external renovations, then you don't need planning board approval. And as far as what is done on the town property, I think that's the jurisdiction of the select board.
Hey, thank you. Thank you for that clarification, you know, because I think the planning board did weigh in on some other things in the past that may not have been appropriate, but I, I know they did. About the parking is there's no, there's no question that that is and will remain town property. And I, I think people in town need to understand that, you know, the parking in front of the old Rinaldi's or the CBS there, that's primarily town land. Parking in front of the, the first church is town land. The parking in front of St. Andrews Church is all, is all town property. So I guess.
St. Mary's, Berkshire Bank.
Right. That's all.
And also, and also the shopping center at the corner of, is it across from, across from Pleasantview Avenue?
Right, right. It's the bank there, the Berkshire Bank, right?
Yeah, but across the street from the Berkshire Bank.
Oh, right. Right.
That's all town property.
Right. And so, you know, there, there's a precedent that we've, we've done this before, but the issue may be more of, of if it's town property, you know, can the tenants regulate parking there? And the answer had been in the past, at least by the select board, is if it's parking, it's public parking. And, you know, I'm not sure if people want to park there to walk the big Y, but, you know, when that bus, bus stop was active, you know, there, it could be that people go there, park there all day and take the bus downtown and, or they take a bus to work. And I just think people ought to be aware that that, that that's a possibility. So, you know, I just wanted to make a comment about that, that it's, that it is public property. And the bigger thing is public liability. Is that something that we're concerned about? We've got, you know, just like we did in front of the community house, we now have a situation where angled in parking, two cars opposite directions can back up, back up theoretically, back into each other? Is that a liability for the town that we've maybe creating by having those parking spaces? Unlike the area in front of the community house, this is significantly narrower and there's not a whole lot of space in the middle of those two angled in parking. So I just thought I, I'd point out some of those and ask some, some of those questions. I, I, I believe the building needs an upgrade, but I'm not sure how much we want to lose our green space or what we gotta, how the town ought to be compensated for losing that green space. Thank you.
I think, I think the, you know, I think one thing I'll point out is that it is, it is a public way. There's no question about it. And, and town council and the town manager, and I talked about that. And they, and we changed this agreement from when it started, when Steve Crane was here, to accommodate those concerns. So we don't, there's no dispute about that. But I will point out that on town property, the town can also set limitations on parking. So if you go to the, if you go to the, the, the little strip mall at the corner of Route five and I should know the name of the street because I used to ride my bicycle on it every day. But it's, it's, there's the pharmacy and there's the little antique store, furniture store and that sort of thing. There are signs there that says two hour parking limit. And I think, I think somebody, and on the street as well, I think somebody at that shopping plaza said, hey, listen, we don't want people parking here and taking the bus for the day. And the town at that time said, okay, we'll help you out. We'll put up these signs. We're not asking the town to do that, but just because it's public doesn't mean that there's no, there's no management of the parking. So it's not, I mean, this agreement does, does not allow, it, it allows, it recognizes in a general way, and this is of course something that we can, obviously the Coalvest and the council play by ear. But Coalvest has had signs there for years on that property that says this parking is for the customers of the building. We're not even talking about that. We're just saying that in this agreement, you know, Coalvest can put up signs mentioning, suggesting a term of parking. I, I think as a practical matter, people seeing all those parking spaces across the street from St. Mary's are not likely to look at this little street as an obvious parking lot. It's, it's really so obviously connected with that building that I think it'll work out fine like it has been all along. But the way it is now, it's really not a, a traffic engineer or a parking lot specialist would not look at that and say, oh, you're doing a great job with this street, Long Meadow. So I, I think we're not really changing much of what is there now, other than improving.
Okay. Well, we'll move on from there. Richard Foster, do you have any questions or comments?
The only thing I'd have, Tom, I'd ask Lynn, Lynn, does the fire department take a look at this for clearances and all on their, their equipment?
They have not reviewed this agreement, at least in the time that I've been here. I don't know if they reviewed it previously. The town engineer has reviewed it.
Okay. Cause it's kind of hard to see from the, the print we've got. But I, I assume then all the clearances are up, up to current codes?
Yes, they are.
Right. That's the only, that's the only question I have.
Okay. Thank you. Mark Strange?
Thanks, Tom. I don't really have any questions. I, I do think this is a good project. You know, that, that area and those storefronts have at times been vacant and it's a visible area of town. I think vacancy of the storefront has been kind of a drag for, for Long Meadow Street. And I know Coalvest does, does a nice job with their, with their development, considering that they're going to be making the improvements and taking on the liability on their own dime and, and indemnifying the town of any responsibilities. I think this is, this is a good project for the town.
Okay. Thank you. Steve Marantz?
Yes. I have a couple of questions in terms of where traffic is coming from. Is it still going to be this one-way little entrance from, you go past the mobile station and park there? Is that what's going to happen?
Yes.
Okay. So unless I'm wrong, I believe Fred Astaire has left the premises. Is that correct?
They have.
So basically, with the exception of the new tenant, whose timing was really not particularly good, that building has been pretty much, except for good old Fred, that building has been vacant for seven years, pretty much?
No. No, I, I think it's less than seven. I, my, my memory was.
I mean, we walk by the way. So is the anticipation that by, you know, repaving the road and making some parking spaces, this is now going to make this a more attractive place that, I mean, Hampton Savings Bank left a long time ago and the Vision Place left a long time ago. And it's been empty, maybe not seven years, but a long time ago. And I'm wondering why, you know, what this is going to do? Is this going to help get tenants in there that haven't, you know, going to show up now because there are a couple of parking spaces and, and the road's been repaved and a little green space is gone? I'm, I'm not sure why, what this is going to do for everybody here.
The, the road and the sidewalk today are in terrible condition. That's what started this process.
Oh, but the sidewalk was replaced. The sidewalk was, at least on the Bliss Street side, they actually, there's been all these improvements. I mean, as I said, we walk this street pretty much every day and that sidewalk is fixed.
Right. And we did that. Now, now there's this section in front, which is city sidewalk and it's a town sidewalk. And it is the primary sidewalk in that section of Long Meadow Street for pedestrians. And, and it's in rough shape. The, the driveway and parking area, the road and parking area are also in rough shape. And what, what we hope to do is not only improve their condition, but also add to the parking count. And, and that has been one of the questions raised by everyone we've shown the property to. Where, where do I park? Where do my customers park? Where do my employees park? And the employees historically have parked in the, the public lot across the street from the church.
And I, I assume that would not change.
No, I don't think it would, except that it would be fewer people, I think, than parking on Bliss Street.
But, but God knows when this was, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and thirteen, but when the Vision Store was there and Hampton Savings Bank was there, people did manage to park and, and, and walk into the buildings to get to what they had to do. That's, that is.
Oh, they, but you noticed they aren't there anymore.
Well, Hampton Savings Bank is a whole other story altogether.
I'm sure it is.
Yeah. I, if, if you're going to make the case that they left because of parking, that would be, I would consider that a stretch. But, but the sidewalk, the sidewalk isn't going to go. The sidewalk should remain exactly where it is, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Um, so there's a, a couple of things. One is the, uh, Route Five is eventually going to be redone. Uh, we, we have plans to do the section from, um, uh, Bliss, no, not Bliss, sorry. From Converse Street down to Forest Park, you know, into the ex, entrance of the town. Uh, eventually, we're going to be doing the rest of Long Meadow Street. And so, at that point, the street will probably be widened a little bit, and they'll be putting bike lanes in. And in the planning of this, um, parking area, has that been taken into consideration?
The only impact their widening and, and reconstruction would have would be on the, uh, the handicap ramp location, um, at the, uh, at the corner of Bliss and Long Meadow Street. Um, and there may very well, at that point in time, uh, be an objection by the S- by DOT's planners to the, uh, current driveway out onto Bliss Street. Uh, the, the first thought is that, that, that process, that design process has barely begun, so we, we have a number of years before we get to that point. Uh, and, and at that, and at that point in time, the, the driveway may not be an issue, and they may be willing to accept the handicap ramp back where the sidewalk is.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll also point out that that was an issue that was brought up at one of our meetings, uh, between Steve Crane and Lynn Simmons. Uh, and, and we actually added a clause to this contract that was not in an earlier version, that, that, uh, it, the risk is Colvest, if the state and the town, uh, have to make changes to the roadways that are detrimental to the project, and, and, and Colvest is willing to accept that.
Okay.
Tom, can I, can I add something, Tom?
Yeah, please.
The, this, and the project, the TIP project that's being referred to, the second round of a four-year plan funding was not approved at town meeting. So, that, that project is slightly on hold right now. We will certainly be pursuing other funding mechanisms, um, but that did delay our efforts.
Okay, uh, because I would think that, you know, what's going to happen at this intersection, this corner, is going to be somewhat similar to what will happen at the intersection of Converse and Long Meadow Street. And so, has that been taken into consideration? You know, because I don't know how much adjustment, you know, there is a, a stone wall going, retaining wall going up, and there'll be sidewalks, and, um, so have, have you guys, has the planners looked at what could happen, you know, further up Long Meadow Street in designing this?
Well, we, we did look at what the impact would be, and the impact would be to the sidewalk that serves the bus stop and the bus stop.
Okay.
Uh, it, it, it would not, the, the retaining wall's pretty much going to remain where it is. Uh, we can't widen the parking area without disturbing the retaining wall, which is the reason we're proposing to take it out and reconstruct it. Uh, you, you, you can't run machines that close to it and not, and leave it intact. It would sort of, it would collapse. Uh, but the retaining wall will be in exactly the same location.
Right, so if-
Mr. LaPointe's point-
I, I think I'm still talking, Mark, um, so-
What do you mean, no talk, wait a second, what do you mean, no talk?
I, I know, I say I'm still talking-
You made an error.
I'm still talking, questions.
His comment was an error. He said that the, the bus stop and the sidewalk will remain, and there's no certainty of that at all.
No, I was going to-
You want to move it, move it to the east by four feet?
I, I'm glad we're on the same track now, because that doesn't make sense, because we, we cannot, we have to have a sidewalk there at a bus stop, and so that means the retaining wall may have to move, and it should not be at the town's expense to move that. And so, I'm just not sure, you know, I mean, we have to have a definite feeling from the board that that won't become a problem, you know, with maybe several years from now.
Oh, the retaining wall is your retaining wall.
But you're going to be moving it.
He, he's not, you, Peter, you're not moving it, right? You're just replacing it.
We're not moving it, we're taking it, we're taking it apart and then re- reconstructing it in exactly the same location.
Oh, well, let me look at the plan again, I guess I-
But making it higher, correct?
Yeah.
It seems to me you've got to, if you're leveling off the, and putting a barrier up on top for parking, right now, I mean, I've got pictures, I can show them to you if you want me to share them with you. But right now, the grass slopes down to the, to the wall from the, that, what you call a roadway. So if you're going to level that off, you're going to have to raise the, the wall. I mean, that's just a, I've blocked the area, I've taken pictures of it, I've seen it. You're going to have to raise the wall, and I under, you know, and, and that's part of the deal. But all I'm saying is that, that, you know, you may put money into the wall and find that five years from now, the wall needs to move, you know, four feet to the west, to the east, because the road's being widened. And it, you know, it's the town's wall, and town may do that. That's the cost that's in there, is it's being done at Colvest's risk, that, that that wall has to move, and you lose that role of, of, of angled and parking up above.
We would.
Right, I mean, I, I, that's how I read the agreement, that you're taking that risk.
That's correct, that's correct, and that, that's, and Mark, that's what it says in, in, in that agreement.
Right.
That, that's why it's in there.
Great, thank you. I'm glad you clarified that.
Can I just clarify something real quick, Tom? Just because Mark was bringing that up. So, it, the language does say that the town will sort of make its best efforts to, um, maintain the improvements in the event the state, so it, uh, the town agrees to use its best efforts, efforts to preserve the modifications to access and parking. So, the state may come in and say that, then, you know, there needs to be changes here, but the town does agree to sort of, um, try to defend whatever work, um, Colvest does on the site. So it's not quite as quick with this language as sort of, you know, jumping ship and saying we're, we're doing what the state wants to do. So the language it's written is a little more, um, town's going to side with Colvest to try to keep the conditions after improvement.
Okay, Jesse, we did get a question from, uh, Peter Landon, also you, and said, what are the draw provision terms on the, on draws on the letter of credit? It's contingent or language on what constitutes performance?
Uh, thi- this agreement just, just mentions letter of credit, just like, uh, mentions performance bond. And the details of how that letter will be written, you know, it'll be an irrevocable, undemined letter of credit, but it's going to be a letter of credit that's going to be approved by the town, basically. But thi- this agreement is not that specific. But i- I mean, I, in my opinion, the town, Jesse, will say, okay, we're going to, if, if we're going to take a letter of credit, uh, it's got to be written to say that if it's on Tuesday and we've decided that, uh, we need to be reimbursed, we call the bank and say, send us $50,000, and the bank sends them the money. Which is, Peter, that's basically the way you want them, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I meant Peter Landon.
Oh, Peter Landon, yeah.
Our banker, he's our banker.
Okay, yeah, all right.
So, can I just get some questions, Mark, Town Attorney?
I'm going to finish up, and then I can open it up to other folks on the board. Uh, so the, the last thing I want to say is that, you know, I, when this came through in, uh, 2017, you know, I was very supportive of it, and I still think that it would be great to get this building online, uh, to have businesses in there actively. Um, um, and so, you know, I just, it sounds like you've done a lot of work to figure out some of the complications, and I appreciate, I know this has not been an easy discussion, but I appreciate your, um, having done, thought about this ahead of time. And, uh, so now, Mark Gold, you had another comment or question?
Yeah, this is just for our Towns Attorney. There, there's clauses in there because, you know, our, Jesse, you commented about the town's obligation or what the town won't do with the state, but there's also a clause in there that says, you know, the town manager shall, approval shall not be unreasonably withheld. What does that mean, and how does, how is that enforced? And who decides what's reasonable recommendations? I mean, is that a, you know, is that putting an undue burden on our town manager and on the Select Board?
I mean, that, that's a pretty typical phrase, and obviously, it's a little bit vague, and, uh, it's the subject of litigation pretty regularly, but it's all fact-specific. So, I, I can't remember the context of where that is specifically, but, um, you know, basically, what it is is if, if Colvest is giving the town, in this case, the town manager as an individual, sort of control and oversight of specifics related to a project, as long as what Lynn is conveying on behalf of the town is reasonable, then that's okay, and it's defensible. Basically, you can't give the town, or Lynn in this case, sort of a veto power to kill the whole project, where you're giving her some discretion and control. What, what arises to the level of unreasonable is different in every case, and sometimes it takes a judge or a jury to decide that, but most of the time, people can work that out.
Thank you.
Any other questions, uh, from folks on the board? Uh, I did have one other question, and, you know, this came before us, and this was approved, I believe, right? In 2017, on this vote? Um, and then nothing happened. And so, what was the story? How come there's been such a delay on this project?
I, I, my idea, I don't believe the board voted approval that night, uh, to allow us to go forward.
Oh, okay.
What it did was authorize the town manager to put together this kind of a document.
Oh, okay.
So we ne- we never said yes, we never said no, we said, let's look, because all we had were a couple of drawings and a, and photographs, or artist's renderings. So, you know, that, I think this is the outcome of that 2017 meeting, two years later.
Yeah, but three years, I mean, it's a long time. It takes that long?
Tom, is it appropriate to ask what the Planning Board sees their role as? I know we heard from Attorney Roberts what he thinks the Planning Board's role is, but is it appropriate to ask the Planning Board? Because they were very active in that meeting three years ago. I mean, I've got, I have notes that talk about Bruce Holton's comments and Walter Gunn's com- you know, there are several people who made comments from the Planning Board, so they, they believed they had a role then. I'd be interested to know what they think now.
Well, we do have, uh, Walter Gunn, uh, has been with us. I don't know if he's still here, if he would want to make any comments.
Tom, I have a comment.
Yes, Richard Foster.
Yeah, you, you had mentioned about the, uh, the design, uh, of that roadway down there, and Lynn was right, it was disapproved at town meeting with, with no approval. Uh, that intersection is going to have a decrease in traffic flow as soon as people, people moves out of there. So there's going to be a, a downgrading, if nothing else, of the traffic flow pattern in that area. So I, I don't think you'll see any, anything close to what took place at Converse, which is a major artery in, in its intersection with, uh, with Route Five. Uh, Bliss Road shall ever, will likely forever remain where it's at, or actually lose traffic ADTs on that section.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Um, any other comments, any weighing in by anyone else from the Planning Board?
Um, yeah, I'm here, Walter.
Thanks, Walter.
Yeah, I, I thought, my recollection was that, uh, Jeff Roberts is correct. We really were looking at signage. I don't think it was, the, the minor changes to the facade of the facility was minimal. I remember Peter LaPointe was, was in on the, uh, on the meetings, and, and it was, uh, pretty minor changes. I think the big issue was what we're facing today. And that's, was the redesign of your, the driveway, the fire department involvement and, and, and fire safety, getting it in and getting out. And I think the town manager, Stephen Crane, started to put a lot of, uh, pressure on a lot of improvements that I think Colvest was not willing to do. Jeff, is that correct? And I think you guys just said, to hell with it. And we approved only one client, and that was the, uh, financial services, um, thing, and we left the rest behind. Does that sound familiar there?
Uh, the, I, I wasn't involved with what was going on with Steve Crane when he was there.
Okay.
Uh, but I do, I do, you are correct that on the Planning Board's side, there was a hearing on the, uh, the tenant, uh, that's in there now, the financial services tenant that's in there now.
Right.
And, and, but there, it was not a hearing, uh, that's what the hearing was about, the signage and the tenant.
Correct.
It wasn't a hearing about what the Select Board should or shouldn't approve in terms of fixing the roadway and, and, and this plan. Uh, isn't that correct, Walter?
That is correct, and, and again, it's, it's complicated, because again, it goes back to when you discussed Ranelli's is, is a good example, because that plaza was, the, the parking is owned by the town. So, when it came to deciding what's off-street, on-street parking, what are the requirements?
Right.
Uh, that became an issue between really the, uh, Select Board and, and the owner of the property. Um, it's a very, it, it is, it's a very complicated piece of land. And it's also, I will say, um, back to the bus stop, it's been designated as, as what we call it, a transit-oriented development area. So, it's a, it's a key, um, public transportation hub because of Bay Pass College proximity. Um, so i- i- it's tricky, but I don't remember exactly what Stephen Crane was, uh, uh, Frank should remember this. He, Stephen was rather persistent about something that really, even I thought was over the top, on making, uh, you guys, uh, come into compliance to something. Do you remember Frank?
Uh, yeah, um, what it, what it was was Steve Crane asked us to, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm here, yeah.
Okay, uh, Steve Crane asked us to, to do, uh, a few off-site improvements that really didn't have anything to do with the site.
Okay.
And at that point, we just said that, uh, it, um, it wasn't really worth our while to do it, and we sort of dropped it at that point. And that's, that's, that's where, uh, that's where we left it, and so now, here we are, we're back.
Yeah, so, uh, Mark Gold, I think from a planning point of view, all we'd be involved with is probably, um, the, you know, that there's, there's adequate parking, which is actually a ZBA thing. Uh, there's no change in use, so we don't touch that one. And, uh, all we look at is the facade, we look at signage, and, uh, you know, and that the use is, is permitted. I, I, you know, this is, this is a tricky thing, it's something that's new and novel. We should probably combine boards here to work with this project. I mean, I think the town is, is dying for tax dollars. Um, we want to see tenants in this property. It's been empty, as, uh, I think Steve Marantz mentioned, for, for quite a few years, and I, and Frank really wants to, to bring this up standard. I will add one other thing, um, and that is, with the, uh, the Long Meadow Street, uh, you know, the TIP project you're talking about from Converse Street to the Enfield Line, I mean, we are a complete street town, so I have not seen the engineering work. I don't know what complete streets will have as an impact on that intersection. Um, perhaps maybe, maybe Colvest would be interested in maybe some kind of a, I call it mitigation fee, but maybe you guys might have to contribute a little bit to whatever the complete streets project requires to make Bliss and Long Meadow Street function there, so, to make your, your project work. These are things that are, I'm just throwing them out, I don't know, this is down the road.
Yeah, one thing that, let me mention also, this is Frank Collicino, uh, that when, um, when we came to your board, Walter, uh, it was with Alex's Bagel.
Yeah, that's exactly, correct.
They, Alex, Alex's Bagel, we had made a deal with them, and they were probably going to go to where Visions was located.
Right.
And that was approved by the Planning Board.
Yes, correct.
And in that meeting, uh, we talked about the expanded parking, and, uh, when part of the reason why Alex went across the street was because we didn't have the parking that he thought that he required.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, so that's-
I also think that, I think the town man, didn't the town manager also, you sort of put a little bit of undue pressure on you for some sort of, I, I gotta use that word mitigation, but that's, that's a term we use, as you well know, too, sometimes. Yeah, you, you pay, you pay us a little bit, and we give you back a little bit. And, and I think it was a little beyond Alex's pocketbook and yours at the time, and it was, it was not, it was sort of unfair. I, I never finished my conversation with Stephen Crane on that, but, um, as you know, the ending was that Alex ended up over on the other side of Long Meadow Street, so.
Right.
Okay, now, as I recall this, Walter, I thought it had to do with sidewalks meeting, um, ADA code. Wasn't there some kind of an issue with a-
Yeah, it, it actually doesn't-
Angle?
Yeah, it doesn't meet code now, so we would make it, it would, it would make, we would, our, our project would make this in more compliance than it is today.
Okay.
Yes, now, more compliance, is that the same as complete compliance?
Not the same as complete compliance, uh, but however, I, I, I can say that, um, all of the town departments have reviewed this plan.
All right.
And, and have gone, and have gone through it, and at the time, had, uh, had comments, and all of their comments were addressed. And, and have gone, and have gone through it and at the time had, had comments and all of their comments were addressed. So not only the town engineer, uh, but every other, uh, department as well.
Well, I, I haven't seen this whole thing. So if, um, somebody, Lynn, maybe somebody would forward all this information, um, it'd be interesting to look at. Uh, it is, and again, it's complicated. This is a complicated piece of land. We have a lot of, of, um, property, I mean, a lot of projects going on simultaneously. I mean, we're going to have the Long Meadow Street thing. Uh, again, it's, it's a transit, it's a bus stop, uh, it's multi-use. And then we did have a problem also at the time, I believe you were, you were concerned about the gas station, uh, using your parking spots. And then you, Frank or I think Jeff, you mentioned the town can regulate parking spots by putting up two-hour signs or similar things, you said.
The town, the town certainly can. It's, it's, we haven't asked the town to do it.
Okay.
And, and, and just, just to clarify something as well that Mr. Gold, uh, asked earlier. Uh, we did commit to, um, to planting the, the one or two trees that were going to be lost elsewhere in town. And as far as we're concerned, we, we would, we would still do that and a location to be determined by the town.
Okay. And, um, any other comments from Steve Marantz or Mark Strange? Okay, here we're done. Um, so, so what do we do now? Um, is this a point where we would need a motion to accept this document?
And Tom, I'll make a motion that we, that select board authorized the town manager to enter into this agreement with, with Coalvest Realty for the improvement of the, this town property. I'd like to make a contingent upon adding the requirement that they do replace the two shade trees somewhere in town in contingent, you know, that are in agreement with the, uh, town tree warden.
And, and the letter of credit too. Did you add that, Mark? That this document would add the letter?
I'm, I'm okay with it the way it is. It's Coalvest who wants the letter of credit. I like.
We are asking for that. The town manager.
We're asking for the bond.
Huh?
We're asking for the bond the way it is. Coalvest is proposed alternative to a bond, a letter of credit.
Correct. Okay, so you, all right, so you wouldn't want to change it to a letter of credit?
No.
Okay.
I, I, I like it the way it is, Tom, with the addition of the trees.
Okay, all right.
That's my motion. I mean, somebody else can do something different and, you know, if, if Coalvest, Coalvest can convince the town manager that a bond is, or a letter of credit is equally good, just come back and we'll modify it and leave it with them. But writing a letter of credit is a, is, is a request from Coalvest, but there's nothing in writing. And I'm not going to prove anything that's not writing. So if they want to wait and come back with a, a proposal that has a letter of credit instead, stable this, but I think they're better back and getting some approval and then making an adjustment to it. It's my opinion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table and is, do we have a person to second it?
I, I, I have a question in terms of this motion.
Well, can you wait until the discussion? We, we don't have a, a motion to discuss until it's seconded.
Back here.
Okay. Has Mark Strange has seconded? Okay, now Stephen, please go ahead.
Well, what I'd like to add to the motion is what I heard from our town attorney is at some level, way, shape or form, uh, we have some obligation, should something happen with the Route five, uh, construction, that we're supposed to help out Coalvest in, 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 in whatever the state says we have to do. I don't think we should have anything to do with helping out Coalvest if they want to do this with the state. I think we should have zero responsibility, zero liability in writing at all times with this project, particularly when it comes to the state.
Okay, and, and so Jesse, did you want to speak to that one more time?
Um, I mean, there's not much else to add. The language, you know, acknowledges, um, the fact that there's this potential tip program. And it just says that even though the, the sort of the risk is on Coalvest, the town agrees to use its best efforts to preserve the modifications to access and parking on the town property that are developed under this agreement. So, you know, I imagine that as being that if there were changes, even if the town likes the proposed changes from the tip program, I don't know that the town can just decide, we like that more, we're going with it. I think they have to do sort of reasonably support the changes Coalvest makes and request that the state not require those changes. Now, the state may not care what the town thinks, or that may be dispositive. The state may come in and say, if the town wants the changes made, then you can, and otherwise we won't do them. But it does obligate the town to sort of go to bat with the state, at least on some level, to protect the changes that Coalvest makes on the property.
Okay, any other discussion on this question or motion?
Yeah, Tom, the wall, the wall is not moving. The walls stand exactly where it is. So any, any improvements that are going to be made, even with the federal highways project, uh, i- is not connected with the improvements that are being made on the other side of the wall. I, I don't know, I, I can't see a, a lot of concern there because it is our property all the way around.
Rich, I think the difference is that right now, if the state was to come and say, we need to move the wall east by eighteen inches, we'd say, fine, we lose eighteen inches of green space. But if after Coalvest makes these improvements, if the state says we need to move the wall eighteen inches east to widen the road, they'd lose a whole row of parking. And so that's what would then trigger this requirement for us to say to the state, no, can you figure out a way to not move the, the wall eighteen inches to the east? And, and Stephen Marant, you know, Stephen Marant's comment is, we shouldn't need to say that. I think that's what he said, right, Steve? So, you know, we should just say whatever the state thinks is best is what we're going to go with.
Absolutely. I don't think.
Well, Mark, Mark, that's standard.
It's not going to be our fight and it should not be our fight.
No, that's, that's a standard business practice. Mark, that would go with any sidewalk, tree, shrub along any roadside in, in our town. Uh, I don't think this is any different. Uh, this is what they go through. Uh, if they expand the prism of the road, I don't think it matters what is there or what's been put there. If they're going to mandate that they expand that road, then they're going to lose part of the parking lot and discussion.
Yeah.
But we have to.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Just back to the, the tip improvement project, you also might face that, that, and Stephen Crane and I did look at this. The, the driveway might have to be reconfigured. That driveway is rather awkward how it now enters into, uh, Bliss Road. Um, there's a stop line that you're supposed to stop at on Bliss Road. It allows that traffic sort of to progress out of that parking lot. Um, with a complete streets project, that might become a problematic issue to the state when engineers look at that. So there is an issue that, so you're looking at a legal document. I think you got to keep that in mind. There, there could be, you know, eminent domain issues and, you know, uh, you know, right-of-way changes that might occur here, so.
Well, and what Walter said though, but those improvements would be funded through the tip program. They would have no bearing. I mean, we're just going to redo the whole darn intersection. They're going to fund it to the tip program.
But it doesn't affect, as long as it doesn't affect your contract with Coalvest, if they lose maybe a parking spot or something changes or something moves, that's all I'm saying. I haven't seen the, again, I haven't seen this agreement. I'm just commenting here on things you should be looking for.
Oh, okay, Walter.
Okay, um, and, and Lynn, is there anything else that you wanted to weigh in before we proceed any further in the discussion?
Uh, no, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. All right, so then we have a motion that's been seconded, um.
Did Steve Marantz want to make his, make an amendment to, to eliminate that clause from this proposal?
Yes. I'm not exactly sure what the wording of the amendment would be, but yes, absolutely.
The question is for Attorney, you know, Beltran Timmy, I'm trying to find it in the, what?
It's in, it's in Article four. Jesse knows where it is.
Yeah, it's in Article four. Um, the deal, is this the best efforts language you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's about this, the third, third line down, fourth line down, it starts with program. And then the sentence and the clause is however, the town agrees. So that would be the, the clause, I think, that Mr. Marantz is addressing.
Yes, and I would amend that we remove that clause. Could, could I, uh, make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Uh, I, I'm not sure, uh, I think I heard Mr. Gold say something one way and maybe something another way. On this, uh, letter of credit business, uh, would it be acceptable to you to say that after analysis of what the letter of credit says, if the, uh, town manager thought that was appropriate, then we wouldn't have to come back to another select board meeting to discuss? Is that, did I hear you say that?
Jeff, that's fine. I just think, you know, it was the town manager who you're, you're going to feel, you're going to negotiate with. That's.
Well, I mean, I mean, it's, 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 I mean, it makes a difference to say we're going to delete that totally from the agreement or we're going to say that it can stay in the agreement with the town manager's approval.
Well, but the agreement we have now doesn't say letter of credit, the one I've got.
No, I mean, I mean, I'm saying that I thought you said that if, at one point, that if the town manager thought the letter of credit, because you're talking about, we don't have the exact language for it. If, so it now says, uh, performance bond, or it says, uh, uh, it, it could be United States currency, it could be a certified treasurer cashier's check. I mean, these are all options that are in the agreement. And what I, all we were trying to do is add in letter of credit as an option. And, and if your motion is that this agreement state that which of those options will be in the discretion of the town manager, that, that would be better than just saying you cannot put it in there at all. Because I think a letter of credit is a very simple way to do all this and it's pretty standard. Is that what I'm saying?
I'm fine with, I'm personally fine with that. I just, you know, want to make sure that we're not giving it, we're not approving a letter of credit until we, or somebody in our, I'm sure when Lynn takes a look at it, she's going to have our attorney and other people make sure it adequately protects the town. And if she's sure, I'm okay with, personally, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I don't know how we word that because right now we don't have that, but we can make that amendment if, you know, as you suggested, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so then we have a motion, it's been seconded, and then the only question would be if we're going to have an amendment to the motion addressing issues on, in Section four that have to do with, um, you know, making our best efforts to preserve modifications to access the parking of the town property, um, development agreement. And, um, I mean, I, I don't know, is that, so have you thought about when the amendment would be? You know, I, I, I don't see how we're, that line really ties the signal back to be wrong. You know, to, to incurring expense.
Um, can I suggest we, based on Stephen Marantz's amendment, that we strike the, the clause in Article four that suggests that, that requires the town to make its best, make a, make a best effort with regard to the state. If we strike that clause, then that would be his amendment. We can vote on the amendment, then we can vote on, have another amendment based on Mr. Roberts' recommendations and then vote on the amended document.
Okay, can, can I, this is Frank Collicino, can I, can I just chime in a little bit here?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, that amendment is really, uh, you know, something that, that we asked for. And we're going to be spending quite a bit of money in redoing this. And all we were looking for at the time was just in the event that the state approved of funding for that, for a complete streets project, that they would just work with us. It was innocuous. We went over this with the engineer, uh, with your in, when your interim town manager was there. And, uh, I, Jeff, you, if you, you were, you were with us in that meeting. And he warned us that this could happen and that the, uh, the funding would, 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 um, change our improvements. And we said, okay, we're okay with that, except that you'll help us, uh, try to preserve it, it, and, and it doesn't put a requirement on the town. It's really a minimal ask in terms of us. I, so I, I, I don't, I don't understand what the big deal is.
Mr. Collicino, if I could, I, I'll, I'll try to respond to that. I think what you're asking us with the, with the, you know, best interests of Coalvest ahead of the best interests of the town.
Not at all.
Conflict with regard to the redesign of Route five.
Yeah, that's not, that's not.
If the best interests of the town say Route five should be redesigned, I'm just going to use an option, you know, eighteen inches to the, wider to the east, which would require the demise of that wall. You're telling us we need to act in the, in the best interest of Coalvest and not necessarily in the best interest of the town. And that's what personally I'm concerned about.
That, that, I agree with, I agree with what Mark had to say about removing that clause. Because while I, I believe I understand what, uh, Coalvest is saying is once we're involved and it involves a lawyer, it's money and it's cha-ching, cha-ching. And I don't think we need to spend any kind of legal money defending Coalvest's, uh, what they did to, to this property. Uh, that's not the deal. So I think. I think you're exaggerating the intent of that. Is the best way to go.
So, so well, it's, we could go on and on. So is there any other members in the select board that want to weigh in on the amendment by Steve Marantz to remove that, that, uh, wordage from Section four? Any other comments from select board? Okay.
I'll just give my two cents. Um, can you hear me?
Who is this? Who's speaking?
Mark Strange.
Oh, Mark, yes, please, sorry.
But I, I do, I, I think as, as these projects go, um, you're going to have math DOT and a, and a lot of engineers, um, communicating with, with the town of Agawam and whoever the, the abiding property owners are. And, uh, there's, there's quite a negotiation process that goes on before anything gets finalized. Um, I think this, this paragraph is really nothing more than, than a gesture of goodwill, um, a compromise. And, uh, it does not affect the town anything, really, if you look at the language. Um, it just says, yeah, we, we're going into this, um, essentially as partners. This is good for the town. And they're saying, um, to the extent possible, you know, if you can advocate or communicate that message to the state, um, you know, that's, that's what we would like to do. I just, I don't see, I don't see this coming down to being an issue. Just knowing how these projects go and how big they are and how complicated, um, I'd be very surprised if, if this, this ever came up again.
Okay, thank you.
With my two cents.
All right, so then we will, uh, call, or, or, so Stephen, you, you have this amendment, uh, to the motion for change the wording in Section four. Is there a second on that motion?
I second the amendment.
Okay, there was a second on the amendment. So I guess I will call for a vote on Stephen Marantz's, uh, amendment to the motion to change the wording in Section four. Uh, Deb House, I'll ask you to do a roll call vote.
Tom?
No.
Mark Strange?
No.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
No.
Okay, the motion did not pass. And we have the original motion, um, to, uh, have the town manager, um, move forward with this process to negotiate the terms of contract. And, um, so we'll take a roll call vote on that. Uh, Deb?
Um, I think we wanted to put an amendment that would allow town manager to authorize an alternate method of, of assuring completion of the project in a bond.
Okay, so that's an amendment to the original motion that would include the, the possibility of having a letter of credit. Um, okay, is there a second on the motion, or the amendment to the motion?
Second, second on the motion.
Okay, okay, so let's call for a roll call vote on the amendment to the motion that would allow, um, a letter of credit as another form of bonding.
Before the vote, could I make a clarification that I think we did, we discussed? It would be a letter.
be a letter of credit if approved by the town manager. Right. Is that what Mr. Gold was talking about?
That was by intent, Mr. Roberts.
It's intent, I agree that's intent. It was approved by the town manager, was in the main motion. Okay, so Deb House, will you call for a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, and now we come back to the original motion, to have the town manager move forward on this agreement and negotiate. Um, and Deb, will you take a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yeah.
Steve?
No.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Uh, uh, thank you for everyone involved in this discussion. Um, I hope we ironed out as much as we could, um, and, um, and good luck to Lynn and moving, moving forward with this. All right. Thanks, thanks very much, and thanks for moving this up on the agenda a little bit. Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, good night now.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, the next thing that I wanted to, uh, move to would be the, um, the discussion about the water supply. Is that item number six in the new business? Because we have, uh, someone from, I believe we have someone from our town still here.
Yeah, Tom, I'm here.
Okay, great. Okay, so, uh, uh, Mark Gold had asked us to put this on the agenda. And, uh, Mark, do you wanna start the discussion, or then turn over the-
Thanks, Tom. My, my concern was that during the hurricane aftermath, or storm aftermath, you know, some robocalls went around to, to the town residents and said, there's been a power failure that's impacted our pumping station on Forest Glen. Please curtail the use of water. And, you know, my thought process was, you know, the next day, woke up and there was a massive, you know, water main break in, in the south end of Springfield, which further complicated things. But my understanding was that it was the power outage that originally stopped this. And, you know, we've got emergency generators on our sewer pumping, you know, amongst the town emergency, the last thing we need to do is tell people to slow down the use of their water. And I wanted to know if it made sense to potentially direct the, the, the water department to put emergency generators to run our water pumps. I mean, it's, you know, the least we can do. And I understand a lot about the water and filling up the water tank and, you know, so I asked Lynn some questions about, you know, do we have a dedicated line to the water tank, or does it just take water off of the, the town lines that are there, so you gotta pump it to the whole town, whatever it is. But the issue is, should we be taking action to assure our water supply in case of power failures, which are becoming more frequent and more lengthy, to the water pumping station on Forest Glen?
Okay, Peter, would you wanna, uh, comment on this?
Yeah, Mark, I'm gonna start by just saying, uh, I'm an employee.
Uh, Peter, I think you need to move closer to your speaker, and just, you can start over from the beginning.
Okay, is this better?
A little bit better. If you get a little closer.
Yeah, not, not really, I have my office there, and I, I'm sorry that's not right.
Yeah.
Let me just, yeah.
I'm sure it'll be better when you get a new office and you do P W.
That's where, uh, that's what we're hoping.
I don't know, you may have to call in on your cell phone.
Yeah, everything's up on my computer. I don't know. Still, you can't hear me?
I think we hear some. Um, let's give a, start to talk a little bit, and we'll let you know.
So, so I was saying, so first, you know, part of the, the reason why we don't stop the generator because the main water supply doesn't get in from our pool.
I don't think we can hear that. Uh, that's not gonna work. Uh, so, I guess, uh, I don't know what our option, I, I don't know if there's another phone that you can call back in, um, and maybe we can get better luck with that.
You try.
Okay, so, um, let's see.
Pete, can you try to call in on the number? I can email it to you, or text it to you, and then maybe we could move on to something else. And then when you can get in, we can come back to you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Let's find on that. Okay, so the other thing would be, um, the charter, um, we will move on to, you know, some old business, on the, uh, the discussion of the charter and forms of government, and structural changes to local government. And so, um, let's turn it over to, uh, this is agenda item, Richard Foster. Um, so, take it away, Richard.
Well, actually, Tom, I'm not quite sure what you wanted to have on the agenda tonight, since we basically just had a brief discussion on this. We're just kinda creeping open the door, and we've been flooded by a lot of letters. I noticed that we had Dave Martel, uh, on there also.
Yes.
Uh, the main, the main, the main reason that I brought this issue up, uh, we heard tonight Liz Bone said that select board members were invited to come before this committee, and that they decided they wouldn't. Uh, I've never heard of such a thing. I have no idea what she's talking about. Uh, I asked several times why we weren't, uh, going in front of this commissioner of the committee, and never did get an answer. So I, I, the only thing I can figure is possibly somebody stopped that communication before it got to the select board. It's the only thing I can imagine. But I know for a fact, uh, let me put this way, I know for a fact, I was never invited to participate, because I would have been talking about the forms of government, because we obviously had some problems, uh, with our planning efforts and, and that type of thing at our town meeting. And, and that prompted the whole discussion, you know, like Pete Landon had a, a minority report that he put out, was very similar to what I've been saying too, that we have some very critical issues to get before our town electorate, and they get blown out of the water because people don't understand what we're doing. And it's, it's kinda a hard thing to accept that you're gonna be delayed six months, another year, because if somebody misunderstands something. Uh, you know, I, I think the present, the present form of government that we have, in, in my view, is it disenchant, uh, disenfranchises voters quite often. Uh, we have no remote options available. Our seniors with nighttime vision problems and delayed hours and transportation issues don't attend. Uh, we don't even have space to accommodate over, we couldn't even accommodate thirty percent of our, of our, uh, legislative body there. We just don't have space to bring in. Definitely hamper single parents, and parents of young children have more difficulty in time trying to attend. Normally, and I guess all the board members will recognize what I'm saying, we normally have somewhere between two to three and a half percent of our electorate that shows up at our town meetings, sometimes more, sometimes less, depending on the issues. And with the, with the way it's set up on the town floor, it's a very poor place to debate complex issues and policy decisions, because of the, because of the rules of debate, you know, five yes, five no, and everybody calls a question, and everybody sits down. And that's a very inappropriate amount of time to debate very complex issues. Uh, so that, that was the point I was trying to bring. This is more, Tom, I, I envision this more as an ongoing discussion with our select board, that we understand the different forms of government that are available, and that the options that we could make a recommendation to move towards a more functional form of government if we felt it was required. Uh, I don't think we've ever had meaningful discussions on the board where we've talked about, say, a council manager form of government. I mean, the public is not aware of what that animal is. And I know I've never had a discussion of this, uh, of this type of government, uh, in the eight years that I've been on the board, although I realize now with a little research that this is the most popular form of government across the United States. Uh, we also had the representative form of government. I mean, all of these governments would give a better opportunity for our citizens to actually be heard from. You know, right now we have eleven thousand regi, eleven thousand plus registered voters in our legislative branch, and most, if, if not all, they might be able to reach out to five different select board members to give them comments to go to the floor. But there's eleven thousand registered voters out there. And with a representative government, if we had a hundred and twenty-five identified representatives, you at least would be able to email, you could possibly email all hundred and twenty-five of those representatives, and that way you would touch the entire legislative body. Uh, if you had a council form of government, you'd have nine to eleven members. And you could easily reach out, any citizen could easily each out, or out and contact every one of those with their opinions. With our present form, i- it's almost impossible. I, it just, it's impossible. We, we, it's like we've grown past it, you know, back in the seventies and fifties and all, it may have been a very good form of government where we had a pretty good turnout. I checked some stats, it looks like they had about the same amount of people. I can't guarantee it, because they didn't keep the same records. But generally, the same amount of people were turning up for these meetings in the, in the fifties. And, you know, the population in our town was considerably less at that. So it looks like the precipit, precipitation or participation in these meetings is going downhill, to where we're down to a, a very small percentage of the people making decisions in our community. And basically, it's the same people. I mean, if you go back and look at some of the old tapes, it's the same players that are coming up. So, that was why I wanted this discussion to be brought out. That, the, the thing that really kicked it in the head was that planning effort this year that you, you mentioned about the hundred thousand dollars to move forward on the planning for a chip project for Long Meadow Street. And it was blown out of the water by some citizen that I had no idea what the credentials of the person were to be talking. I wasn't at the meeting. But yet that wasn't, that, that program wasn't defended by a single person on this board, or anybody else in the audience. It was just blown and cast to the side. It's, it's an insane process to where we would deny a hundred thousand dollars of money that moves us closer to getting ten million dollars free from the state. We're gonna have to do that road regardless of who pays for it, but this is the legal mandated effort that we must go through to get in line to get that money. And, and it was blown out of the water, and we've lost another year. So I'm frustrated. So that's why I said it's, maybe it's time for us to at least have this discussion, and, at, at our level. No decision has to be made, Tom. That, that's how we're after. I think it's time for a discussion, for us to talk about it for a while, maybe start to do some surveys, maybe try to figure out, you know. I found out recently that, that we are, we as a board ourselves can actually propose governmental changes and let them go to the meeting, to a town meeting, and then pass them on, if they're approved, you pass them on to the legislature, and it goes through all the approvals up to the governor, and then comes back down for a full review of our community where they, where it goes to a general election. Uh, nobody's ever mentioned that process before, but that is an actual process. It's, it's in the law that we can use. So there's a lot of angles to, to look at this. Uh, and I, I don't know where else I can leave it, Tom. Is that, that's what I wanna, that, that's what I'm trying to get us to the point, that at least we explore it. This was not done, and it wasn't a core function of the charter, uh, review committee. They cannot change the form of government. But they could have talked to us, and there could have been recommendations from even that group of saying, hey, why don't you at least look at these different things? Uh, why don't you form a study group to look at the form of government? I mean, they're, but, but to me, there was nothing except routine kind of, uh, word changes in the government. And, and you know, I know, and I know for a fact, Stephen, I think, was at almost every single meeting. And some of the changes I read are, are strictly to what I figured his benefit at that point. I know these were issues that he personally was pushing. So, uh, that's where I'll leave it. I, I, I don't expect any action, Tom, tonight. Uh, I don't know if we need to spend a lot of time. I think it's an ongoing issue that we'll just be talking about.
Okay, well, we've, we sort of opened the door on it, and, uh,
Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me, uh, we've had some feedback from, uh, some folks, and it seemed appropriate, although a number of people, you know, would have liked to spoken, that we have Dave Martel, uh, make some comments, as he was the last chair of the, uh, review committee. And, um, you know, and I know that we always see the documents that you had put in, um, in the, in the agenda. So I will, guess I'll ask Dave Martel, um, if he could just speak, if you could unmute yourself and comment.
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, I'm on the phone, um.
That's perfect. We can hear you. Dave? He was there, and he, he just, he hung up. Um, he will call back in. Oh, here he is.
There was, there was no sense, uh, among the committee members or members of the public, who, there were a number of whom who came before us, who said that the town meeting is form of government.
All right. Is, is that, that's basically your statement? Okay, I guess, uh, that's it. So we can, um, ask for-
Can I just make a comment, please?
Well, I believe you will. Yes, we're going through the, uh, select board. Mark Gold?
Thanks. I, I think that Richard identified two areas that sounded like they frustrated him, and to some degree, they frustrate me. And those are low participation. And s- sometimes the minority can drive a decision and set the town in a different direction. And that's what happens, excuse me, when only a couple hundred people show up at a, at a town meeting. You know, not necessarily a reason to change the form of government, but certainly we're not doing our jobs if, you know, if we only have a, a minority of people showing up at the meeting, and we've got a lot of minority issues that are getting passed and driving the town meeting. And I, you know, I mean, my personal opinion is that, you know, if ten signatures to get something on a town warrant is nuts these days, because I can get ten people to sign for anything. On the other hand, that's not a bylaw, that's a state law. And so, that's not something we're gonna, we're, we're gonna change. But, you know, I think we ought to, as a board, focus on how do we get higher participation and, and start, you know, pushing aside some of these potential minority issues that, that have, take up a lot of time and create a lot of use of resources that majority might not support.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, Mark Strange, you have any comments?
Uh, yeah, I, um, so going into this, this whole thing, I was, I was, um, kinda skeptical about how effective town meeting can be, um, in the twenty-first century, considering it was created, um, you know, back in seventeenth century, when towns were forty or fifty people, and you're, they literally gathered at the town meetings, um, and, and had their, had their meetings. Um, but after talking to several people who know a lot about this topic, uh, and hearing from the charter review commission, um, I am comfortable with our town meeting, uh, or open town meeting form of government. Um, and I do think we should keep it. Um, I, I, I will say that, um, I was, I came onto the board kinda midway through adopting the charter review, um, recommendations. I think we should make it a priority to adopt their recommendations, whatever ones, um, are still left. Um, I think, I think we owe it to that, to that commission to effectuate, um, the recommendations and validate their hours of, of work and, and volunteer time. Um, and, you know, to the, the Mark, uh, Mark's point, I think we need to find a way to, um, get more people involved. I don't know if, if, um, that's, that's, uh, in some way allowing them to participate remotely, um, doing a better job of educating the public on, on, on issues that are coming, um, not only for town meeting, but come up, you know, in their, in our meetings. Um, you know, participation is very low everywhere for, for local government, any government. Um, so there is that challenge. Um, you know, but I think we have the best form of, of government right now. We should try to make it better.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Um, Steve, would you like to comment?
Uh, yes, I have several comments about this. I, um, A, I think that we, we have way, way too much on our plate for discussing a charter commission, which is what we're gonna need to change the, the, the form of town government. But I don't think we should really spend a whole lot of time on this, but as long as I'm speaking, I will agree with Richard Foster completely. I think town meeting, um, was a really wonderful idea in seventeen twenty. In twenty twenty, with eleven thousand town voters, think about this, we had all eleven thousand town voters show up. The Mullins Center in Amherst is the only venue in the whole western Massachusetts that can actually fit the required population into it. If we had eight thousand, we might get, we might squeeze into the Mass General Center, maybe. So as a form of government that's participatory, it's, as, as I said. And I think back in the day, it was a really swell. But I think it's, it's, it's outmoded, it's just not what we need today. And having said all that, though, I think to discuss this at this point in time, um, charter commission is the last thing this town needs to be voting on, uh, for the next bunch of years. First, we need to get through COVID and, 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 and the twenty-five dollar, you know, uh, tax on the cap. We have, we have a lot to do before we'd say, let's, once again, have a charter commission to change the form of government. So, well, I think we want one, I don't think now is the time.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I have some comments. I had, uh, a lot of letters, uh, from folks who were basically saying that they want to maintain their town meeting. They like the format, um, that, you know, and I think there's a couple of things that really made a, an impression on me. And one was an individual who, um, basically first, you know, in a town meeting, they got up and spoke for the first time. And then later, they, you know, got on some committees and started getting more involved in the town. But the town meeting is, is an important sort of avenue, uh, for leadership development. And leadership development is really important because we need to develop leaders from our community who can speak out in front of a group of people and then run for office. And so this offers, you know, we have meetings where young people, you know, very young, speak in front of the town. And you can't get that by sending a Twitter or by sending an email. You know, you really need to get people out, uh, a lot of public, you know, the, the duties of a public servant, you know, of a, a government official are public. You, you need to speak in front of people. I mean, the fact that we're doing this virtually is a little different. But as you know, we have to speak in front of large groups of people. And so, you know, a town meeting becomes a great venue for leadership development. Um, the other thing is, as a person with a research background, is we look at, you don't always need to capture the information of every person in the sample to know what's going on. Like, if you want to know everything about, uh, seniors, you know, in town or people over age thirty-five, oh, no, I guess seniors would be older than that. But if you wanted to get a sample, if you have a representative sample, you know, if, you find that, if you get just enough people in your sample, you really know and you can extrapolate into the, the whole population. And I think, you know, our town, the people who do attend are a pretty representative sample. We get a, a pretty broad view of folks from all sections of town, uh, and I think we get different ages. And I think that we get people who are well-prepared for town meetings, that, that we read. I'm not saying every person reads everything before they come in, but I think that we have, um, some quality people. So, um, uh, the other thing is, when I reviewed the materials that we sent, and, you know, it seemed clear to me that, um, you know, one of the, the major, uh, issues was that, um, they said that, uh, you know, they summarized this one approach is that whenever an organization is not working, people look for leadership to make it better. Um, and so then people begin to look at what are our different options? And example after example in the materials that we were sent, really said that there was some sort of conflict that was in the town that was pretty significant. And it, over time, the town eventually changed their form of government. And, um, and in this case, I don't see that. Um, so I, you know, that's why we haven't gotten a lot of support for, for really looking at having a charter review, um, at this, or not a charter review, but a new charter commission. But, um, you know, I, I think that it might be helpful for people, uh, to have read the information that you sent, Richard. I think it was helpful for me, uh, to look at it. Um, but I still have every, um, sense of confidence that we have the right, uh, type of government. Uh, so I guess, you know, we've had, we've opened the door, we've kind of discussed this a little bit. And, um, and I don't know where we go from here. I don't, Richard, if you, um, is this sort of where you want to leave things for now? And then just bring this up at some later point?
Yeah, let me, let me correct one thing, Tom, if you can. Uh, we don't need a charter commission to change our form of government. That's a misconception. Um, the select board can go through, through a process through the legislation called a special act. So, uh, there's a lot of things that we don't know about the process. And, and Tom, I, I understand what you're saying. I, we get these letters and we got the letters coming out right now that say the town meeting is the best thing since butter on grits. Uh, but when we look at the percentage of who we've listened to, uh, we have over eleven thousand registered voters. And if you, if you heard from fifteen people, you could see what the percentage is. And I know the people are gonna write right now, just like the ones that are online here or talked tonight. They're in favor of the town meeting, uh, because we haven't, there hasn't been an honest attempt to go to the other part of the people and say, hey, look, here's the options, folks, and here's the problems we see. So we can let this issue go by the wayside. I, I, there's no action required on the board. I was only trying to bring awareness up. And I may, I may give you some additional information that I have, because I think it's good information for us to have as elected officials. We should know what forms of government are. I'd like to take the test right now, but I don't want to embarrass anybody. So we'll just, uh, let the issue drop, Tom, that's fine.
Okay, all right, great, well, we'll look forward, if you have other things for us to read, we can, um, you know, just put them as a, as an addendum to our, our meeting in the future, and, and that's great. Okay, thank you. All right, so, um.
Tom, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, Peter, all right, Mr. Thur was here. So we'll go back to the issue of our water supply discussion. Mark, for those of you who weren't, may have missed them earlier, um, Mark Gold had talked about perhaps we need to have, um, generators that would help pump water into the towers so we didn't have a water shortage. And so Peter, uh, we'll let you take it over.
So what I was just, uh, in question, like to Mark's question earlier, um, so how the pump station works is we have our two sixteen-inch transmission lines coming in from Springfield supplying water. Um, the two, uh, check valves, um, that we have coming in, they are powered normally, they're powered closed. So they are normally open. So anytime there is a loss of power, there is no need for a generator backup, because what happens is the valves will remain open and stay open and fill the tank. Um, so two things that happen is, once that happens, the tank will continue to fill, um, and eventually it will overflow. Uh, we did put in, because we had an issue back, uh, probably about eight years ago or so, when we painted the interior of the tank, that we had to shut the tank off. And what that did is that increased pressure and we were blowing water main lines. So what we have redundant now is we have a pressure regulator in that pump station. So if there is longer than, and say, I mean, typically, when we lose power, um, over at the pump station, it's normally, it's a, it's a, it's a short time where we can just allow, you know, we don't lose a lot of water. We let the tank fill and we let it overflow, um, never without water. Um, but during that time, the main reason why we put a call out there, I worked with John Dearborn on this, was because this is an exceptional year where probably in a long time, in the fourteen years that I've been here, that pretty much every day, we have both pumps running in the morning to try to maintain our level in the tank, because everybody's irrigating because of lack of rain. Um, so with the power outage, I was in contact with John Dearborn about one-thirty in the morning. Uh, they said that EverSource was gonna get the power back on early morning, which it came on at four o'clock. So just for precaution, we wanted to put that notification out there that there was, you know, just for, you know, for lawn, you know, lawn irrigation only, uh, you know, just to, uh, you know, just to conserve that. Um, just before the power, you know, came back on, just for the early morning demand. But during that time, um, I was up around four-thirty, um, and that's when that large water main break, uh, happened in Springfield over on Columbus. Uh, so during that time, that was kind of a good thing, because our tank was full, uh, and overflowing a little bit. And we lost pressure from Springfield. So we had to hurry up and get in, and we basically had to shut down the pump station on the outside, from our outside valves, shut the pump station down so we could save the water in our tank, because it was all going back into Springfield. So we were fortunate enough where, where Ludlow, majority of Springfield, and half of East Long Meadow did not have any water. Uh, we did maintain and we did have some water, um, until Springfield could isolate that and build our pressure backup. Um, and then we could turn our pump back on and fill up the tank. So as far as having a backup generator, the only thing a backup generator would do at this point, um, would be, you know, it would run our fluoride system, which, you know, when we have emergencies like this, that's not a necessity. Um, so even if we did have a generator where it would, you know, run our pumps, um, even without power, I mean, we, we still wouldn't, it still wouldn't have mattered, because like I said, we were losing pressure from Springfield. And at that time, the pumps were running, but even, we couldn't even turn the pump on, because we had higher pressure in our system than what Springfield had. If we had opened up the station again, we would have lost our tank completely.
Well, that's a very thorough description, uh, thanks, uh, Mark. Uh, did you have any other questions on that?
Yeah, I did, I, I mean, Peter, I appreciate the, the comments. I, I still don't understand why a call went out that said, you know, due to the power failure, please restrict your water use. And, and it's just flat out seems to me that, you know, all the goofy things we, we engineer and put in place here, you know, supplying water to our residents is, you know, is, is pretty darn important. And, and for Pete to say, you know, if we have an extended power outage, don't worry, we don't need the, we don't need to keep those pumps running, I, that I don't understand. I mean, I, you know, I, I understand fluid dynamics, I'm a, you know, chemical engineer, I get, get all that stuff. You know, we supply, we have pumps to pump water into the city, into the town of Long Meadow. If the pumps don't run, you know, obviously, we're much lower pressure unless our water tower is full. If our water tower is full, then we've got a backup from that system. But if our water tower is not full, we don't have a backup. And, and again, I don't know, you know, I don't know what kind of a generator we need. We certainly have a generator down on our sewage pumping station, because otherwise, our sewers would all back up. I'm just saying, you know, what would it take, how much does it cost, what would it be? As part of this whole thing we talk about as emergency services, why we don't have emergency backup for, for a, a required utility like that, I just don't get it. And, and to say that the city of Springfield's got enough pressure going into the system, then why do we have pumps at all? So I, I, I hear Pete, I understand it.
Well, Mark, just to let you understand that, that the pumps right now, basically what they're doing is they're filling the tank because of people's irrigation systems. Those pumps do not run from, basically, they, they're off in September, and they don't come back on until May. Those pumps do not run at any other time, except when the irrigation systems are running in the town, and we have a lot of irrigation, and we have that high demand. So you have people waking up in the morning, they don't, they don't run in the afternoon. They run first thing in the morning, only in the summertime when there's high demand. There's been times where those pumps have run maybe twenty hours in a year. So at the time, the engineers, when we were going with, you know, we were looking at putting in, it was an awful lot of money to spend on a generator to sit there. Not only don't we have the room in the area over at the pump station at Forest Glen, because we sit half in Springfield, but to have that money for a standby generator to sit there and do nothing, it was a lot of money at the time. It's just where the system's designed. And like I said, you want to know what those pumps are for? Those pumps are for filling up the tank when we have high demand in the summertime for people's irrigation.
Thank you for clarifying that. Um, other members of the board have any comments, uh, Steve Moran's?
No comments.
Okay, uh, Mark Strange?
Nothing.
Okay, Richard Foster?
Uh, the only question I have, Tom, Pete, what would happen if we had a prolonged power outage, maybe a week or so?
We would still, the check valves would be open, the tank would be filling. But at that point, we wouldn't want to waste all that extra water, because we aren't paying it for Springfield. So what we would do is we have our pressure reducing valve that was installed when we painted the interior of the tank. And that regulates normal operating pressures when we have our check valves open, you know, from Springfield during normal operations. So we don't have to, you know, we won't be blowing the water main lines by, you know, shutting off the tank completely, because that's what happened last time, we increased the pressure. Gravity, we have about a hundred PSI coming in from Springfield at Forest Glen Pump Station. So, uh, we're, we're kind of lucky that way. But, um, that's, so if we had a pro, like you said, if we had a prolonged outage, we would have to put the pressure reducing valve in place in the pump station.
Yeah, and that, and I guess you'd possibly have to put a call out for people to stop irrigating, correct?
And that's kind of what we did. I wasn't afraid of, there was, at no point, we weren't afraid of running out of water. But because of the high demand, we just wanted to, you know, maintain a little bit water level in that, you know, in that tank.
Pete, that message I got, it didn't say stop irrigating, it said, don't use water, period.
Right.
So what happened on that?
Watch our messaging.
Well, what happened on that time is because when Springfield, when that break was going on, it was draining all our tank. And by the time we could get down to that pump station and close our valves, we were losing all the water. We were in jeopardy of losing the water in the tank until we could shut that pump station down. So the message went out and it was kind of confusing. And we went back and I talked to Dearborn and I talked to the fire department, if they could put a message. It was again, you know, not use the water, you know, uh, you know, for irrigation and, but the message, of course, half of us didn't get it, because at that same time, everything was going on, Verizon went out. So nobody could use their cell phones. Um, but then we started getting calls down here at the DPW, you know, and what was going on. So we put a new call out there explaining what was going on.
Okay, Pete, and, and, and talking to people from other towns who didn't have any water, um, you know, I appreciate the work that you guys did and your quick action. Um, now, how often does something like this happen? Where the, the water coming out of Springfield is such at a low level that it would actually drain water from our water tunnel into Springfield? Has this happened a handful of times in your career? I mean, how many times?
Since, since I've been here, it's, it's happened twice.
Twice.
They've had major water main breaks. I think there was both this one, uh, just since last week, and there was another one. I want to say that that was probably about seven, six or seven years ago, uh, down on Union Street. They had a very large break. And, um, like I said, when, you know, when that happens, we have to get down to the pump station. I mean, the, the failsafe is, um, normally, like I said, the power outage, we have water. We're, we're not, we're not worried about losing water, because the failsafe and so is check valves open. But it's a totally different story when Springfield, we lose pressure from Springfield. Um, in the interim, what we were trying to do is we have a, an agreement with Hazardville Water, where we have an interconnection, uh, there's a twelve-inch interconnection on Shaker. And we were trying to get ahold of them during this. Uh, they can supply us, it hasn't been set up before, we have not used it before. But for emergency, we can hook up a pump and hydrant to hydrant and get water from Hazardville Water, Connecticut Water from Enfield to, uh, to supply us with water. Uh, hydraulically, it's not enough to fill up our tank, but it will give us some water into the system if we lose our source from Springfield for, you know, a long period of time. And then again, they can only supply us with X amount of gallons of water anyway at that particular time.
Right.
Yeah, Pete, Pete, what about your check valves up there, uh, did they kick in?
The, the check valves were open, they're powered closed. So anytime we lose power at the, at Forest Glen Pump Station, they're open. That allows us to get water from Springfield. That allows us to get water from Springfield.
Okay, but I mean, it, but I mean, in, in this reverse flow situation, they didn't automatically shut when they had reverse flow on them?
No, no, when the, when the power, when the power, uh, was restored. Those valves, the way it happened, it happened so quickly with the power coming back on, which came. About four o'clock in the morning. So there was like an hour, hour and a half span time from when the power came back on. And when the water main break was going, that the valves were already, we were already losing, we were already losing water. So we, we had.
Richard, what you call a check valve isn't a check valve. Because if it's a check valve, it only allows flow in one direction.
Right, that's what I was, that's what I was about to ask him then.
They're, they're globe valves. We call them check valves just because they, they check, they, they call them check valves. They've always called them check valves, but, um, they're, it's just a big.
Okay.
It's just a big globe valve. They, everything on there, all the controls, everything, they, they call them check valves, but it's a, it's a globe valve.
Okay, so it, it's a spring loaded and it just opens, it opens up?
When they are closed, that's the check valve. They're closed, no water's going into Springfield.
Right, but I mean, when you lose power, they automatically open up?
Correct.
Okay, so then we could, we could have drained the tank, period?
Correct, it's right. Because of, of the water main break, like under normal circumstances, if that had happened and we lost power. The valves are still gonna, you know, they're, they're still gonna open. And then we would have to manually shut them.
Yeah.
But because it happened so quick before the power came back on and they were draining back, there wasn't, there wasn't time for that. So we just had to shut the station down. And then, of course, we couldn't because we only had about thirty, when they were isolating their break, it took them a while. Uh, just because most of the valves were underwater down on Columbus. Um, so what we ended up doing is before we could turn our pump back on to start filling up water again into our system. They only had about thirty pounds and we still had about forty-five, fifty pounds in our system at the time. So of course, if we had opened up those check valves, there was no water coming in from Springfield. Again, we would continue to drain the tank.
Right.
Right. Well, I hope that we have enough information on that and we got a business agenda.
If, if there's still a flaw in the system, Tom, I mean, Pete, Pete keeps calling it that, else, but I'm an engineer. They're not check valves, they're globe valves. What we need is check valves, it sounds like, so that water can't flow back into Springfield. You know, and if you want to put water in Springfield, then you build a, you know, a bypass around the check valve that you have to go down and open manually. And for some reason, you need to backfeed the system. But something happened and it, and it, you know, from a hydraulic system, it didn't work right if we were emptying our water tank back into the city of Springfield. That's all I'm saying. And, and if it's not needing a, a, you know, a, a generator, maybe we need true check valves with a bypass system. But we got to do something because we can't afford to lose water like that.
Okay, we'll leave that discussion at that point. But thank you for your comments and Peter, thank you for, uh, explaining the course. Um, we'll need to move on now. Uh, Paul Pasterzic, I know, um, there was some talk about the investment policy. Was there someone who's going to be speaking to that tonight?
Uh, yeah, Cheryl Cudnik is, um, on the line here.
Yeah, why don't we move on to that so Cheryl can do this? She doesn't have to stand in front of us in person, but, uh, we'll look forward to her reporter. So let's turn it over to the investment policy quarterly report.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Cudnik and I'm submitting the quarterly report for the, um, Town's Cash Investment for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty. And as usual, the town held no long, long-term investments that exceeded the five-year limit. The individual bank balances were under the five million dollar balance provision, except for Country Bank and Adam Savings that hold bond proceeds. Which allow for us to have an eight million dollar balance. Um, all banks again received the highest safety rating of green from Vera Bank. And all accounts are fully insured and secured. Uh, we did a borrowing at the end of May for twenty million, one hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. And of this borrowing, eleven thou, eleven million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand was refunding on the two thousand and eleven school bond. A hundred and twelve thousand was refunding on the twenty-eleven water bond. Two million, four hundred and ten thousand is towards the DPW facility. One million, three hundred forty-three thousand is for the Wolf Swamp Fields. Seven hundred thousand for the landfill phase two. Seven hundred and twenty-two thousand for the sewer and septic and three hundred and eighty thousand for the Willow Brook Road Drainage. Um, with the bond proceeds and associated bond premium of three million, four thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. And adhering to the investment policies, these funds were deposited to, um, Adam Savings Bank, which was earning one point three five. I deposited three point three million, three point nine million went to Country Bank at point seven five percent. Two point five million went to Munson Savings at point five percent. And the remaining seven hundred, seven million, seven hundred and fifty thousand to People's United and two million, four hundred and seventy-four. Thousand, seven hundred and six to East Boston Savings Bank. And those funds totaling thirteen million, eight fifty-two, four seventy-seven. Were then used to pay the refunding of the twenty-eleven bonds for the school and the water mains. Um, the rates have continued to decline. People's United total weighted rate, um, last quarter was two point two four percent. Was reduced to a point two-one percent. MMDT decreased from one point eight-eight percent to point five-two percent. Munson Savings total weighted rate of one point six-five percent was decreased to point five-o percent. And Adam Savings Bank was one of the, the banks that had the least decrease from one point seven percent to one point three-five percent. And with the rate changes, I did move in July, two point three million from People's United to, uh, Munson Savings that was paying a higher rate. Um, in April, we went out to, um, search for a lockbox service and the three banks that I looked at. Sentry Bank came back with the most cost-effective, um, use for the lockbox. And we did start that with our first quarter tax bills. Um, it, uh, I do encourage the residents to use a lockbox service. It is going to be much more timely getting the money to the bank and the posting is much more accurate. Um, also, it's, it's, you know, and there will be an envelope provided, making it much more easier for the residents to use. The interest earned on all bond proceeds this quarter was a total of fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the investment income earned this quarter on the OPEB pension reserve, reserve funds was two hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Um. Let's see, our net decrease this quarter of two million, five hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred and five dollars in cash and investments. Was a result from the wars payable and the teachers' balloon payroll. I mean, we received commitments for motor vehicle, um, real estate, personal property and the bond proceeds. However, with the DPW facility and the Council on Agent facility expenditures, the debt payments going out of loan totaled over twenty million dollars. As a treasurer, I will continue to seek the best possible, possible interest rates and fund our accounts payable and payroll. Timely with funds from bank accounts earning the lowest interest rates when possible. And will continue to monitor all funds and accounts and move funds to achieve the highest rates when available.
Well, thank you, Cheryl. That sounds great. Um, and, um, so do we need to vote to accept this or?
Not necessarily, just if you have questions.
Okay, good. Uh, are there any questions on the board regarding this?
I have a question.
Yes.
What is, in terms of a single deposit number at a single bank, what is the limits, the insurance, the limits?
The, the, the limits are, are, I believe they're five million dollars with our investment policy, with the exception of if we have bond proceeds. Um, because we get a huge influx of money with bond proceeds, in which case the bank limit is eight million.
Okay, so theoretically, if we had five billion, we could stick it into one bank. The only way I could stick more net and have it insured is if it was bond proceeds.
Right, and they are insured either through the FDIC or other, um, collateralization. Again, all part of the bond, uh, of the investment policy.
Okay, okay, great. Uh, any other questions from the board? Okay, well, thank you for your report, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
And we can, um, start to move. I, I think the other thing that, uh, we wanted to put on the agenda. Or not on the agenda, but to, just to return to, in terms of old business, is the coalition, Long Meadow Coalition for Racial Justice. Uh, we received a PDF on that and, um. So we can discuss that. I will turn that over to Mark Strange, right?
Um, yeah, I guess I can, I can start it off and then I'll toss it over to Lynn.
Okay.
Uh, so, so yeah, so we, uh, we, our last meeting or two meetings ago. Uh, we adopted a resolution to determine, uh, that racism was a public health, uh, crisis in Long Meadow. Um, and part of that resolution was, um, to create, uh, this task force to, um, work on some of the issues that are illuminated. Uh, in the resolution and also in the, um, in this PDF that's, that's on tonight's agenda, which, which Lynn created. Um, so I, I think at this point, I'll just, I'll toss it over to Lynn and, and then maybe jump back in what she's done.
Thanks. Uh, yeah, so at your July sixth meeting, uh, this was a topic of conversation. Uh, the board, uh, directed me to come up with a framework for a, um, coalition or committee or task force. And, um, this is what I have presented to you tonight. So I will read this, um, or I'll summarize it for those watching and maybe, uh, who haven't clicked on the link. Um, on the website, but this is linked on the, on the agenda. Uh, so what I have put in front of you tonight as a draft is that there would be a task force made up of nine residents. Uh, with demonstrated interest, experience or expertise in the issues under review, especially black, indigenous, people of color. Or people from other historically marginalized communities. Out the, um, um. The makeup of the, uh, nine residents. Uh, the task force would discuss, research, gather data and report back to the select board on the steps the town can take to reshape the discourse. And actively engage all citizens in the dedicated work necessary to address the scourge of systemic racism. Recommend alliances with organizations that are confronting racism and how those alliances can benefit the community. Identify methods or areas to promote racially equitable hiring and promotion of all employees, including town employees. And advocate for and draft relevant policies that recognize and seek to mitigate the adverse impacts of racism. Uh, I had in this draft here that people could submit a letter or an email to myself, the town manager, by September first. And that the group would convene, uh, virtually in September with the goal of issuing a report to the select board by March thirty-first. Uh, this is again, a draft to start some conversation and, uh, see if this is heading in the right direction or what modifications should be made so we could get started on this.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Um, any comments or questions for the board? Um, Steve Morantz?
Uh, no, I think it, I think it's a good start, although I'm still not quite sure why it has to fall in the lap of the town manager to do all this. Um, but I think in terms of what Lynn has drafted, I think that's, you know, I think that would be on the right track.
Okay, uh, Richard Foster?
No comments, Tom.
Okay, uh, Mark Gold?
The question for Lynn is this a town manager's task force or a select board's task force? And is it the town manager who appoints the members or the select board?
Uh, good question. I guess I'm looking for some feedback from, from you all. Uh, my understanding, based on that meeting on July sixth, was that you directed me to kind of pull this together. That there wasn't the thought that it was necessarily my task force, but that, um. This group would work to pull a report together and submit that back to the select board. So I would imagine that this may be, uh, a select board populated group if that were the case, if they were reporting back to you. Um, but I, I think we can certainly discuss that.
Yeah, I, uh, the, the, the issue for me is the issue of, you know, open meeting laws and minutes and all that kind of stuff. Town managers' task forces aren't subject to those requirements, but a select board task force is. And so, you know, it's just a matter of. You know, visibility or, or open, openness, whatever it is. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mark Strange, any other comments?
Hold on, Mark, let me unmute you.
Okay.
Unless you can do it.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, we can.
So, so I, I had always envisioned that as a select board appointed task force. Um, I think it's important for, um, you know, the, the applicants and the interviews to be conducted, uh, in public. Um, and I do think that following open meeting, um, guidelines and laws will be important as well. So I, that, that was, uh, to me, that was the kind of two outstanding, uh, questions that, 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 that Mark, that kind of beat me to the punch on those. Um, with those, that's my two cents.
All right, um, yeah, I mean, I, the feedback, I, it's a great start. I think it, let's, let's see what, um. Folks we have interested in it, um, and then figure out the next step. Again, for me, you know, it's, there's, there's two issues, uh, primary. One is that racism and how it affects individuals. And the other is there are people in our community or in our such, in situations who can discriminate against people. And they're really kind of separate. You can have racists who never able to discriminate, um, but discrimination is, you know. Uh, you know, not giving people an equal advantage in situations and, and doing it on, on the form of, uh, you know, their, their, their race, basically. But discrimination is, is another thing we need to make sure is that. And I, it looks like you're trying to address that in this information also. Okay, so, um, so where, I mean, do we want to just start to form this and then have further discussion on it? Or is there any other ideas? At this point, about this being a select board or a town manager food?
I, I, if Mark, you know, thought it should be a town, a select board task force, I think so too. I think we should just organize it as such and. You know, if, if letters of interest are due by September first and are first or, you know, depending on your agenda, the second meeting in September, get them all in for entries. Then, then start the system up. Is that what you intended, Mark?
Yeah.
All right, and that's what we'll, we'll plan.
Would they, they'll submit letters of interest to me and then I bring them forward to you at your September eighth meeting for. Would this be an interview process similar to what you do for boards and committees?
Well, if we're adopting a board with nine people, you know, if, if we get twenty eight applications, then we'd go through the interview process, I guess, Lynn. And my sense is use the same form we use for other organization, you know, committees and groups and things like that. And, you know, so we get a little bit of background on people, but yes, the answer is yes, that, you know, that's the way it would be done, I guess.
Okay, and now, um, just the timeframe here is just something I plugged in, just as a talking point, I guess, or not a talking point, as a point of discussion. Um, and I'm, I'm seeing, um. The possibility that September first might be too short of a timeframe, but I'm also trying to do something that, um. It recognizes that this, we want this, uh, coalition to get up and running. Would we want to push that out until your second meeting in September and have the deadline be the Thursday before that meeting? Uh, which would be. Uh, which would be, um, September seventeenth. Which gives us a full month.
Lynn, I think you want to give Deb some time to arrange, uh, the interviews. She may want to get it in a few days earlier than the seventeenth.
Okay. The fourteenth? The week before your twenty-first meeting?
Well, yeah, you're going to post the fourteenth or the fifteenth. It's, she's going to need time to make, uh, some arrangements for interviews and timetables.
All right, um.
Mark, you want to make a motion to accept this with those new date?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, accept this. Um, I guess guidance letter for the, creating the Long Meadow Coalition for Racial Justice. Um, with the only, uh, change to the, to the letter being, um, that residents can submit a letter, email. can submit a letter, email to town manager by September, what did we decide on, fourteenth?
Fourteenth is four weeks, so I think that's enough.
Yeah.
Okay. And do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
All right. We'll take a roll. I need discussion? Okay. We'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Deb House, will you do that?
Tom, who's second there?
Mark Gold.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote, Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that'd be good, because this is a busy time. I mean, I know some people are trying to squeeze in last minute vacations because they realize they haven't had any, uh, because of COVID, and then there's also schools starting, people are shopping and all that stuff. So it'll give people a little more time. Um, so that's great. Okay. And where do we go from here? I guess we can, uh, move back up to the beginning. Um, I don't think we're going to hit everything, but I would like to, um, do approval of the minutes. We have two minutes, um, from eight, three, twenty, twenty, and eight, seven. A motion to approve the minutes of eight, three?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Call for a vote. Deb?
Is Tom who's second that one?
I think.
Mark Gold? Mark Gold? Right, Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, and then, uh, approval of the minutes of August seventh? Special meeting? Okay, the second?
Second.
Okay, and Mark Strange? Um, and, uh, can we vote on this?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, so I am going to, uh, move over a couple, um, we did have, um, well, let's see. Where are we at? It's almost ten. I, I think we should move on to the, uh, approve the residents' request for address change. And we have, uh, two different requests. Uh, the first one is for, uh, property on Frank Smith that wanted to change their address to Wellesley. Um, I don't know if we have anyone to speak on that. I don't see anyone.
Tom, there's no one to speak, but I know the history if you want me to let the board know.
Sure, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, this is a Jerry Nollet to put this request in. Apparently when his home was developed, the driveway and the mailbox is located on the side street, which he is requesting to be his official address. But his home actually is listed on Wool Swamp Road. Uh, and he's just asking, like, like the other residents said, to be on the side street instead of Wool Swamp Road.
Yeah, I'd correct you, it's, it's Mark, it's, uh, or it's Frank Smith Road.
Uh, Scooby, Frank Smith, that's correct.
All right. Um, there were some photos attached and, uh, the photo, it shows all the mailboxes lined up on Wellesley. There are none on Frank Smith. And the, um, there was no house, no access to the home from Frank Smith Road either. There's actually a wall retaining there.
That's correct, Tom. And it's like he mentioned, all the other homes that are under similar cir- circumstances have the side street address.
Yeah. I would move that we accept the address change. Okay?
I'll second.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, roll call for a vote.
Tom?
Not present?
Mark?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, uh, Mark Strange. Uh, Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay. And we also have another address change request. And this is, um, a gentleman who's at thirty-eight Twinbrook Circle and would like to change it to thirty-six Twinbrook Circle. Um, I don't know if Mr. Tai is on the, here to comment on it. But I don't see him. So, um, all right. So where do we go with this? Do we have a motion on this change?
Yes, I'll move for discussion.
I'll, I'll move, be approved it.
Okay, and, and Mark would, so, well, Richard?
I'll second it, I'll second it, Tom.
Okay, all right. So Mark forward the motion and then Richard seconded, um, any discussion on this?
Yeah, do you, do you know anything in the history on this one, Tom?
Uh, no, I know that we probably get about, you know, I don't know, every seven years we may get two or three of these. Uh, so, uh, but he just wants to, uh, have his house be thirty-six and the house across be thirty-five instead of thirty-eight. Um, and, you know, he says good Feng Shui.
My, my, my comment is anyone who mentions Feng Shui should get my vote.
Okay. We'll get the town in order. Yeah. Okay. Uh, any other discussion? Okay, so we'll, uh, move to a vote on the motion. Deb, can you?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, great. That's that. Um, I guess we will go to the audit correction report. Paul Msterzick?
Hey, this audit correction report goes back actually to the, who should say, the FY two thousand and nineteen management letter. Um, there were a number of issues that were, were brought up in that management letter. Um, the first one I had brought to the attention of the board back in March dealing with the classification of two enterprise funds that we operate, one being the, uh, solid waste recycling enterprise and the stormwater enterprise. Um, the auditor has raised the concern because of the high tax subsidy that is funding each one of those, um, enterprise funds. And as a board, it was agreed that, um, we were going to eliminate the solid waste recycling enterprise fund by the end of this fiscal year. So that FY twenty-two, it would, uh, be accounted for in the general fund, mainly because, again, the small, um, the small revenues generated within the fund, um, were only making up, you know, twenty percent of the full revenues of the fund and the general, the general fund tax subsidy made up about eighty. Um, we also had discussion on the stormwater enterprise fund. The board had voted minimally a policy that would increase the, or, uh, the increase to funding levels of the, um, the stormwater fees as a percentage of the total, um, stormwater costs. Uh, and we've gradually been doing that. Um, and it was elected that we would keep that stormwater enterprise fund as is, and that will correct itself over time as the, um, general fund subsidy decreases over that same timeframe. So, um, I will have a warrant article on the October warrant to abandon the, um, solid waste recycling enterprise fund. And that should take care very much so of this, uh, audit finding, um, from last fiscal year's audit. Um, another issue that was brought up dealt with IT controls, uh, backups, retention, formal process, review of policies and so on and so forth. Um, I got a note from, um, Nick George back in early July regarding a response to this. Um, basically, we've been doing some training regarding, um, phishing awareness of, of staff that we had, we all had online training to go through. Um, additional training would be added if people, I don't want to say, um, if they responded to certain phishing, um, emails that were sent to them as, as kind of little test matters. Um, also Maya Grant was awarded for the purpose of, of, uh, network vulnerability detection. Um, that equipment has been installed and the vendor is conducting some network analysis as we go on. Um, and I'm not sure if Nick has that final report yet regarding that network analysis. Um, with regard to backups, uh, for the MUNIS system, uh, backups are done regularly now on a daily basis. Um, they are done remotely and logs are automatically kept and logs are automatically sent to email staff for direct review and action if required. Um, those back, backups are also tested regularly. Um, then we're also required, because we haven't, we didn't really have a, um, a password policy to get into the town systems. Um, they did come up with a, a structured of so many letters, characters, numbers, capitals that had to be involved. Um, so that was put into place for those individuals who had what were defined as weak passwords that were already, that were in place, they had to be modified. Um, and then finally, there was some new network equipment that was in, um, new network equipment that was going to be installed, um, for further segmentation of our, of our, um, programs. Um, some of them were on the same server. These will, if they're seg-, if they're segmented further, it would eliminate kind of the potential of malware infection. Should one server get infected, it would only have a limited number of programs that we could possibly impact. So that information came from Nick George, um, back in, uh, early July. I see that Pete Landon, who is chair of the Audit Committee, is on here also. Um, and again, this was gone over with the Audit Committee back, I believe, in, in early July also. Um, with regard to number three, which dealt with the, uh, performing of the student activity audit funds, those audit, uh, student activity audits were just done over at the school department for the five schools that do have, uh, run student activities. Um, I do have copies of those audits now in my hand. I have not had a chance to review them, but that audit has been completed and, uh, the audit reports were issued to the school department. Um, lastly, there was an issue with, uh, or a recommendation that the, um, accounting department do a subsequent review of the treasurer's bank reconciliations. Um, after the treasurer's office were, were through with them, we ran into a staff who, as we changed, uh, assistant town accountants, maybe about a year and a half ago. Um, we were a little bit behind. We are now basically caught up. Um, we are just waiting to do the June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty review. Um, that one normally takes a little bit longer because it's the end of the fiscal year. Um, but we are basically right on target to keep those on target and remain on target, um, going into FY twenty-one. And finally, I will just say that the FY twenty audit did start last, well, it actually started a little while ago with some internal questionnaires that were sent to certain departments. Uh, the auditors were on site last Monday for a one-day, um, internal control inspection of procurement processes. Uh, and they're now expected back after we close out the book, sometimes to the mid to the latter part of September.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Uh, any questions from the board on that? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on, uh, to, uh, number five on new business, which is EverSource. Yes?
One thing on the, um, I, the, uh, report, there's some unanswered questions that we're looking forward to getting back, hearing back from the school department, which manages the IT function. Uh, they've answered surveys for the past two years that say that the, uh, technology committee is responsible for IT oversight and it'll do, it'll set up plans, priorities and an annual IT budget. And they, they answered the survey, no, they don't do that. It's, IT is evaluated regularly for risks and any identified risks are appropriately addressed. They answered two years in a row, no to that. Uh, outside providers used by the entity are evaluated, determined. Those who provide material financial services that may impact controls, and they answered no to that. A backup plan and data retention policy exists, and they answered no to that. And, uh, interfaces between systems, um, anyway, controller, assessor, et cetera, and they answered our accurate transfer, for the accurate transfer of data, no. So, you know, we, we've gone over and sat down with the superintendent and Tom as it twice and the Audit Committee and, um, you know, um, we, we've thrown the ball back at Lynn to a degree, you know, and I went so far as to recommend that maybe the, the memorandum of understanding we have the school department be reconsidered. There's a whole administrative call, code called one point zero. And if you go down it, it calls for an advisory committee, which is established and it's listed in all our advisory committees, and it has never been formed. And either we got to clean this stuff up or, uh, take it out of the demands, that, that's what the school department was supposed to do. And, uh, but all the good stuff to talk about, those things were, are getting some traction. And, you know, the whole pushing program, the passwords and everything that, if you're in a, uh, professional company, uh, are done. But, but also the planning and the budgeting and the advisory committee with all the experts we have in town, uh, I don't understand it. It's, it's, it's beyond my comprehension. So that's the Audit Committee, you know, additional comments.
Okay. And, and Peter, uh, when was that questionnaire filled out by the school department?
We're getting, like Paul just said, there's a third one coming in. And one was, uh, twelve months ago and twelve months before that.
Right, so I, I give my, I, I guess some of that would have been taken care of with, with Nick's response, maybe not all of it. Um, probably the biggest issue is, you know, are we going to have an IT committee or not? Um, there was an IT committee that was actually appointed. They actually just never met many years ago.
Mm-hmm. And, um, I, if I can comment quickly.
No, no, Paul, go ahead, let's go.
Oh, no, just, uh, I know this was on the, uh, one of the agendas back in the fall, or there was conversation about this right after I started. And, uh, in February, myself, Paul Msterzick, Tom Maza and, um, the superintendent and the IT director started meeting to go through the IT service level agreement and make some updates to that. I think the committee was listed in there as well as being one of the outcomes of that. And we did, we did make some good efforts towards that and then everything got put to the side, uh, to respond to COVID. Um, as we looked forward to the capital planning efforts and I've, I've started to look at some of the software and, um, technology needs of the departments and to try to streamline and coordinate a little bit better because of that department that are, you know, making specific IT requests without thinking about whether or not there's something already at use in another department that they maybe could utilize and just get a license for. So this is on my radar and I plan to address it as time becomes available. Um, I've talked with the IT director to coordinate better on this. This was just last week, actually. And both him and I plan to set aside a bunch of time in the fall once the remote learning gets, um, set back up and they, you know, feel like they're at a point where I can take some of his time. Um, but my first priority is making sure that the schools can reopen. Um, and then I'll address with him the rest of the department needs. But I'm well aware of this and it's on my radar to address.
Um, I don't think it's on Lynn's nickel. This goes back two years. That, I don't think it's also, I think Nick George, everything I reports I get, if you talk to John Dearborn, he says he does a great job, he's on top of things. It's not a, a staff level administrator problem. The administrator problem is at the school department. And that's the way I see it. And, you know, I haven't talked so frankly about it, but when you go into your third year of no action, you got to wonder. And, and I asked John Dearborn, when, made a few phone calls on my own. And I said, where are the biggest security issues for the town? He said, the two of them are, one is the server material is all down next to the boiler in the high school. And there's a possibility of that whole area, because the water and all the connections to the boilers is literally right next to the server room. And it's so hot, they have to install, bring in special air conditioning equipment to do it. So that's, that's an issue. And the second one, he said, the fiber lines that we have extending around the town and we're expanding are exposed. So if you wanted to cut off communications with police, fire, emergency, all you got to do is locate one of those and clip them. I don't think that's easily solved, but I think the one, the server thing in sitting next to the boilers in the high school has been there for a long time. And it's not a capital planning projects to improve.
All right, well, Peter, I think that, we appreciate your comments and, and this is a pretty good indication for the viewers listening of how the Audit Committee, you know, tries to keep the town in good shape and but I agree that, you know, we, I know that Nick George has been doing a great job with trying to keep us from getting in trouble with the internet and we fell, had all the select board members had to take classes and so forth. But, yeah, well, good, I'm glad Lynn, that you're, you're stepping up to, to move a little further on this and then, you know, I don't know at what point this stuff, how the select board could, could help us, help you guys with this process.
Well, you can look at administrative code 1.0 and look at what's in there. And then you wrote it and signed it, this select board, and 2011. And it spells out everything, I didn't make up those, those requirements. They're all in an administrative code, which is part of, of the mandate of the town.
All right, great. Any comments from the select board? Mark Gold?
Yeah, actually it was Jen Jester and I who put that together, Peter, and, and, and you're right. We've never had the IT department or the school committee, and I'll speak frankly here too, adopt the need for, adopt the use of an IT committee for oversight. That was one of the agreements that we had as part of IT consolidation and moving it under the school department rather than under the town. And it's, it's never been completed, but, you know, we're going to talk openly here and I know this is an open meeting, but, but, you know, we still have this, this school department that's not in compliance with our, with our charter regarding their finance department. You know, and, and so, you know, if they're blatantly not in compliance with their finance department, how are we going to get them to be in compliance with the IT function and getting an IT committee? And I, the answer is, you know, the, the budget. I think, I think the select board needs to use the power of our budget control to get action. I appreciate the fact that Lynn's going to, you know, it's on her agenda and she'd like to take care of it. But it's been, you know, 10 years that this IT group is running without an IT committee is oversight. We have a lot, a lot, a lot of people in town who are extraordinarily knowledgeable in IT, could do an awful lot to help. You know, kind of like, you know, we've got a Parks and Rec committee helping our Parks and Rec department. You know, we've got an adult center committee helping our adult center. Why we don't have an IT committee helping our IT department, they're supposed to approve the budget, review the budget, all that kind of stuff. So it's, I, I agree with Peter, it's, it's long past due and we need to do something about it. And I suggest we, you know, give Lynn a little bit more time to take action. She's a new sheriff in town, but if it's not done, we ought to step up.
I want to give our independent auditor credit. She's the one who initiated this survey two years ago, the land sending company. And so the whole discussion came, the fact that a financial audit, in her opinion, because of what IT has become in our society, has to be also an IT cybersecurity audit. But they don't perform that itself. So one of the things when I sat down and Paul Pesterzic and all of us sat down with Nick George at times, we went over the fact that of what these, these requirements are and he definitely understands the field well and is capable of, with the proper people supervising and, and setting up the administrative part.
Okay, great. Can we move on to other boards members? Mark Strange, any comments?
No, no comment.
Okay, Steve Marantz, no comments. Richard Foster?
Yeah, the only comment I got, Tom, is it's not the first time it's been brought to the board's attention.
All right, so then we should, I don't know, I guess we'll have to.
You know, Nick George went to the, the state provides a free advice and counsel on how to do everything. They're so concerned about municipalities getting hacked. We haven't read about one for a month or two, but, you know, Chicken Bee went down the tubes and paid a ransom, you know, to get their whole systems back. You know, Paul's assured us that we're, we're safe in that whole regard. But there is this whole cybersecurity situation that's out there. And the state will do a lot of things for you these days and Nick, Nick knows all about them. He's applied, has applied for some grants. So, I mean, there is hope on the horizon here, but I think what's going on in general in society with COVID and other things, you can't do it all at once, but I gotta, I gotta raise this up the flagpole. Thank you, bye.
Okay, great. And yes, you know, it is a, a very important issue, especially now that we're going to have more and more people doing remote learning and using computers and we have to make sure our system isn't going to go down. You know, with a regular school, people calling bomb threats and, you know, trying to get the day off and, you know, we get hackers in here, we're going to have big problems. So yes, you know, it's a important need. And so we'll follow up when Lynn has a little more time to get into it. And we'll see what we can do to help the Audit Committee get their work done. We appreciate all the work you guys do. Okay, so we'll, let's move on to the, the next thing we could look at is the Bay State Gas, Columbia Gas EverSource letter regarding the gas sale from EverSource purchasing Columbia. And.
Could we defer this conversation to the executive session? Is that possible?
I would be very willing to do that. Hopefully we'll be in executive session soon. Is that okay with the board? Because I think to have other.
It's appropriate, yeah.
Okay, so let's do that. The other thing is, the only thing, couple of things left. I think that the, given the time, I think we should move the, you know, talk about the, the updated liaison assignments and the overhead wire discussion to another evening. But I would like to get to the town manager's report. And I think that we're pretty much, we'll have all the items on the agenda. If anyone thinks I missed something, let me know. But why don't we go to the town manager's report?
Okay, thank you. Give me one second. I will make it very quick. Let's see, sorry. So I just wanted to provide you a quick update about tropical storm cleanup. At the writing of this report, there was no update, no decision yet on a townwide cleanup. Today, I went and viewed the damage that happened at the transfer station over the weekend. We grasped the things catching fire and the fire that we had over there on late Saturday night into Sunday morning. Cleanup's pretty much done, the transfer station will reopen again tomorrow for those extended days. That being said, this is the last week, we are looking at doing those extended days. And beginning Monday, we will be starting the townwide cleanup. I will have more information towards the end of the week on exactly what that's going to look like. What section of town we're starting in and what path we're going to follow. Considered doing the reverse of what the trash pickup schedule is so that we follow some similar route like that, but I, I'll release that information later this week, once we have it developed. We do, as part of this, we, I would like to have a conversation, it doesn't need to be tonight, but sometime very soon, about what, what our policy or plans may be as we have more of these types of storms. This is not an item we have budgeted for a townwide storm cleanup. If we're going to continue to do this, we should look at budgeting for that. And I've talked to Paul Pesterzic about it as we look forward to the FY22 budget. But I guess I would like to have a conversation with the board and maybe we could do this at a different meeting to figure out what you, what we should do as the town, what the expectations are, what we want residents doing, just so that we're all clear moving forward. Who's going to do what and when, and then budget for it. Moving on from there, the building permit software, the online permit link has launched. Residents can now go online and apply for permits. The online payment option is still being worked out, but that should be ready in a few weeks. But you can go and apply for a permit online now. There's a link on the homepage, right at the top of the homepage on the left-hand side. The Nullwood Sidewalk project is pretty much complete. I put some pictures there in the report. It went fairly well, there was no, nothing important to report. They're going to low and seed it and then it should be done. Little small fields went out to bid. At the writing of this report, bids due on August 20th, however, we issued an addendum to it and we kicked the date out one more week. So bids are now due August 26th. The second phase of LED streetlight project is complete. If you've noticed an issue with any of the lights that were installed in your area, you can email publicworks@longmeadow.org or give the DPW a call and we can take a look at it. Still working out a couple of the little issues that we had, but really nothing, nothing substantial at all. So that project is wrapping up and pretty much complete. Westcom, State 911 has awarded Westcom a $2.6 million development grant and a $2.3 million support and incentive grant. The development grant will cover the town community assessments and money for renovation of a new facility that is still ongoing, that conversation about Seltzer College. The Morningside Drive culvert replacement project, that work has, we've selected a contractor, Aqua Line Utility. They are going to be starting the first week in September, but they've started some erosion control and sedimentation controls this week, actually. And this week I intend to submit a, it's called a meta grant. It's a municipal energy technical assistance grant through Green Communities Division. I reached out to select board member Mark Gold, the town engineer also assisted, and members of the Energy Sustainability Commission have also helped me out with this. This was a short turnaround on this grant, it's due on Thursday morning. So I really thank these residents for helping me and the town engineer for helping me pull this together. What we're looking to do is apply for funding for a feasibility analysis, conceptual level clean energy plan and a high level business case for a community shared solar project at what will be the old DPW site. I expect we'll hear something on this in September because I think they're trying to get these done quickly. And I will report back to the board if we're successful in that. And if you've gone by Town Hall at all lately, you may have noticed some work that's been happening there. Part of an Eagle Scout project, the decommissioned World War II memorial has been removed. The flag, the flag will remain, but the other concrete has been removed and some plantings will be placed once the work is done. That is the extent of my report.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments? Mark Strange?
No.
Okay, Steve Marantz?
No.
Mark Gold?
Good question. I just want to thank you, Lynn, for the decision on pickup from the storm damage. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff along the tree belt still that needs to be done. But bigger question is, there's a lot of information in the news about voting and voting by mail and things like that. Do, do we need any additional resources for, for Kathy Ingram to, you know, turn around two quick elections in a row, one in September, one back in November? You think we've got all that staffing taken care of?
Stuffing ballots has been a multi-department effort. We, everyone's taken turns in the town hall meeting room to stuff envelopes and get those ballots out in the mail. I will certainly check in with Kathy to make sure we're fully prepared for November. I do think there may, most people, it appears at this point, have been selecting all elections this year. So there won't be that initial influx of applications for November, we'll already have those on file. But I'm sure there'll be some new challenge that we're not thinking of at this point. But I can certainly report back and let you know. But we want to make sure that runs as smoothly as possible, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, Richard Foster?
Yeah, good job, Lynn. And by the way, I, I'm willing to come in and work anytime you would like help down there with a mask. I can help stuff envelopes any day.
I'll see you at 9:00 AM tomorrow, Lynn.
Yeah, in the future, I'd like to open up a dialogue with the possibility of increased volunteer services when we have a a major event like this, there's a lot of areas where we could have volunteers working that wouldn't interconnect too much with DPW for preliminary cleanup. A lot, a lot of good opportunities for community development. We got a lot of citizens that would be willing to be out there and work. And you say you need help tomorrow?
Yeah, I was, I was, I was going to take you up on it, but I will definitely do that. I was just giving you a hard time.
Okay, well, when, when you, when you're ready, give me a call, please.
I definitely will, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. The only comment I have regard to the, the report is Westcom. You know, and, you know, we look at, in some parts of the country, they're defunding the police. They're trying to find better ways to address a lot of the mental health issues that police officers have to deal with and a lot of the social service kinds of issues. And I guess, you know, at some point, we may want to look at how we might be able to address some of this at Westcom. You know, that, you know, we have officers there, we have firefighters. But maybe we need a seasoned mental health professional who could really understand some of what is going on in that room and, and dealing with. I know they triage the calls to 911, but, or, I mean, from 911 to different police operatives and so forth. But it might be interesting to see if, if there'd be room to, to open a discussion about that. Because so many police calls involve, you know, people with a mental health crisis. And, and right now, I know that because of COVID and families being together, the number of hospitalizations for mental health issues has increased. Therapists are just busy, as busy. I, I know myself, 25 years, I've never been this busy. And I think that having mental health professionals, you know, involved in Westcap might be something I'd like to discuss a little further in some way, maybe we'll talk about it offline. So that's it for me. So the last thing on our agenda would be select board comments. And then we will go into executive session. So we can.
Are we going to do anything about that Columbia gas? Or we're going to do that in the executive session?
I think, I thought we would do it the next one unless, I was trying to get to that and I guess we didn't. I don't know, what do you guys think? Do you want to try to address that? I think we, oh no, we're moving it, that's the one we're moving to executive session, Mark. So we're going to address it in executive session, not in public session. So that leaves us select board comments. And Mark, do you have any select board comments?
Yeah, the, the only follow-up, the last time I talked about, was there anything we could do for residents who were, you know, impacted by the COVID-19, whether through job loss or whatever? And, you know, it's interesting, I, I sent a couple of letters off to people, like our state representative and state senator. And it turns out that, you know, Long Meadow is one of the very few towns in the Commonwealth that have quarterly tax bills. Almost everybody else is semi-annual tax bills. And so, you know, people, job loss hasn't impacted anybody because there's not too many bills due in other, other communities. But the, the general indication was that, that, you know, the governor gave us pretty broad. bills due in other, other communities, but the, the general indication was that, that, you know, the governor gave us pretty broad range to do things. And so even though in the past we couldn't, there's some thought by at least Senator Bessers' staff that we might have some latitude. So I'd like to maybe take a look at that a little closer in one of our upcoming meetings.
Okay, yes, I know we didn't have any time in this agenda, but thank you. Um, Richard Foster, any comments?
No, I don't have anything else, Tom.
Okay, uh, Mark Strange?
No comment.
Okay, uh, Steve Marantz?
No comments.
Okay, the only thing I, as a select board comment, uh, is that this is August, uh, our last meeting in August. And this month is the one-hundredth anniversary of the Nineteenth Amendment. Uh, it was in August nineteen-twenty that women were given the right to vote for the first time. Uh, there's a suffrage, suffrage app, uh, activist Annie McTeer, who was the first African-American in the city of Springfield, uh, who was female to register to vote. Uh, we also look at this as the two-hundredth birthday of Susan B. Anthony. And, um, there is a, uh, a display at the DeMoor, DeMoor Museum of Fine Arts in Springfield uh, about women in the mood, so, um, I don't know if they're allowed to go down there, but, uh, congratulations to women. It's been a hundred years, uh, this August in their, their ability to, to vote and, um, obtain suffrage. Uh, so, uh, I would look for a motion to move into executive session in accordance with Mass Law, General Chapter thirty, Section twenty-one A, to discuss uh, strategy to regard to anticipated litigation relative to the new D P W facility, Pride Limited Partnerships, and the gas, uh, related matters, discussion of which in open meeting may have detrimental effect to the litigation position of the town and the chaired soldier players, not to reconvene into open session. Also approved in the vote on minutes from June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty and July sixth, twenty-twenty. Is, can someone forward this motion?
So moved by Richard Foster.
Okay, okay.
Second.
Okay, by Steve Marantz. And, uh, Deb, will you take a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, thank you for watching. It was a pretty exciting meeting, a lot of stuff packed in, um, and we will see you next in, uh, September. And, uh, the date on that is the not the first, but the.
September eighth.
September eighth, okay. So we'll see you then. Have a good evening.